Hello, hello, we are back, it looks like, and are we ready to go? Do we have everybody?
I'm ready whenever you guys are.
There you go, perfect. Okay, I'd like to call to order our regularly scheduled city council meeting for Monday, March 22nd. This meeting will be held via teleconference only in order to reduce the risk of spreading COVID-19. And pursuant to the governor's executive orders and the Los An- County of Los Angeles Public Health Officers Order. All votes taken during this teleconference meeting will be by roll call vote. And the vote will be publicly reported. You can view the meeting at MalibuCity.org/video and MalibuCity.org/virtualmeeting. To participate before the meeting, send us an email at citycouncil@MalibuCity.org. During the meeting, members of the public may also speak through the Zoom application. You must first sign up to speak before the item you would like to speak on has been called by the mayor. And then you must be present in the Zoom conference to be recognized. Please go to MalibuCity.org/virtualmeeting and follow the directions for signing up to speak and downloading the Zoom application if needed. Can I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Farrar?
Here.
Councilmember Silverstein? Councilmember Euring? You're muted, Steve.
I'm here.
Mayor Potem Gresanti?
Here.
Mayor Pearson?
Here.
You have a quorum?
Thank you very much. I'll now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The second time today. I feel very patriotic, Mike.
We are indeed. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. I'm gonna have a motion on approval of the agenda, but I want to suggest we consider bringing 7A before 4B. I know that, I believe, Councilman Euring is, are you recusing yourself on 4B, Steve?
As you also recuses themselves.
One more time?
I think it depends. There's a whole bunch of recusal stuff that's gotta take place. And I just want to understand who's recusing whom and why we're being recused before I jump on that train.
Okay, so should, in an abundance of caution, should we move 7A since it's a very quick item before 4B? Can I get a motion on that?
I'll stop move.
Bruce, did you have a question or a motion?
No, it's the second motion.
Oh, okay.
I'm favor that, sure, absolutely.
Okay, can we have roll call? And then I'd like to also join this meeting in memory of Deputy Mike Cherny, who was in Malibu quite often over the last few years and died way too young unexpectedly recently. If we could do that, that would be great.
Excellent idea.
Excellent.
Okay.
Does that motion also otherwise include approving the agenda?
Yes, it does.
Councilmember Farrar?
Yes.
Councilmember Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Euring?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Gresanti?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Okay, thank you very much. Can I have a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on March 11th, 2021.
Okay, great, thank you. Now we're on to oral communications from the public. I assume we might have one or two speakers signed up to speak.
You do?
Lucky guess.
It looks like you have 11 speakers.
Alright.
Lloyd Ahern, Bill Sampson, Janet Rosenthal, William Winaker, Lester Tobias, Howard Bretzky, Hamish Patterson, Craig Hill, Lance Simmons, Colleen Baum, and Ryan Embry. So Lloyd Ahern is first.
Okay, great, thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name is Lloyd Ahern. I have two kind of alerts to give out to you guys tonight. There, there was an article in the California section of the LA Times yesterday by Steve Lopez, who I only agree with at least the most half the time. And he was talking about an Assembly Bill and a Senate Bill about putting cameras to stop speeding in California. And what I want to do is get Senator Stern, our senator from Malibu who understands PCH and Point Doom and the speeding problems. John Moss has been, you know, been the guy that's kept us appraised of all of that Point Doom speeding around the schools. And of course, I live on Pacific Coast Highway and that's all I ever talk about. And that would really, having cameras on Pacific Coast Highway would really help us. And the, having Stern and Bloom work with the David Chu from San Francisco as the Assembly Person and Susan Rubio, who is from Bowen Parkus in the State Senate. And she says in this article that she was a Vice Principal and all she really did was traffic control around the school to keep people from going too fast. So I want to get our lobbyist up in Sacramento on this and also everybody that knows Bloom's office and everybody that knows Stern's office, please call and say, let's hook onto Senate Bill 735 for the Senate and Assembly Bill 550 for the Assembly. The second thing I want to talk about is there is a new business in Malibu called, it's not, it's not a timeshare and it's not an Airbnb. It's a right next door to me, a guy bought, overpaid, a company called Picasso. Picasso.com paid way, way over a million dollars over value for the house. It's 1,900 square feet. It's on the beach. They're selling one-eighth interest for $800,000 apiece. This thing is riddled with problems for the, for the neighborhood quality of Malibu. I mean, we need the hotel that we have with norm, but we don't need a bunch of hotels in, along the beach and it's all through Malibu now. It's on Sea Level Drive. It's all over the country, by the way. It's a new budding industry. So Picasso.com, look it up. We've got to all become aware of this. I've talked to some people in the city. They're aware of it. And I just want to get everybody on alert. Picasso.com and Assembly Bill and Senate Bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Lloyd.
You have some timer issues, so if you don't see your timer, go where you are being timed. Next would be Bill Sampson. They don't see him in the meeting.
Let's circle back to Bill.
Janet Rosenthal, same thing.
Uh oh. We got going on time.
So let's start with William Winaker.
Okay.
Hello?
Hi, Bill, I can hear you.
Okay, fantastic. So this, the homeless issue demands complete transparency. Perception is reality. And it just often seems like it's rolling along as if to satisfy the will of a few without the mandate of the majority of the community. We all know that any three council members can jam any issue upon the citizenry. But ultimately, without true voter support, such endeavors will ultimately fail. Or we will end up with irreversible fiascos like the Legacy Park Weed Field and Homeless Encampment. I implore the city council to form an ad hoc committee for this issue. Perhaps each council member can appoint two members. I have heard and taken to heart the concern that we don't need a new committee to start from scratch or duplicate efforts. And to that concern, I have spoken to various key members of the informal working group. And we are all mutually assured that none of the work to date will have been for naught. It's a starting point to keep a continuum, not, not an opportunity to start all over. We will simply formalize the effort, bring some fresh eyes to the table with tremendous energy and desire to recommend the best solutions to the city council and the community. Thank you for considering my suggestion.
Thank you, Bill. Appreciate it.
Let's see, quite a few people not here. Let's move next to Hamish Patterson.
Great.
Hello?
I hear you, Hamish.
Hi, good evening, Mayor. Um yeah. I've taken a break off from this, from the city participating. The acrimony down there is toxic. And I have to comment here, you know, I attended the special meeting earlier and I genuinely don't think the public really knows about it. And I'm super bummed to, to get it, this is a quote from the end of that meeting because I stick around through these things and I listen. It's hard for me to explain when the residents use up all the time talking about something they read on TikTok. I'm not gonna throw the council member said that under the, under the bus, but I take great offense to that. As a person who does not participate and next door, any of these social media things. People who bother to show up at these city council meetings are vastly important. And that acrimony towards the public is part of the problem is the, the city council is not an independent body. It represents the people of this community. And what we see going on is, is the, the walls seem to be closing in down there and, and it, and it seems to be justified by this partisan vibe going on down there. And it, it needs to stop. And if it doesn't stop, I suggest that every single member of the city council resign as well as the city manager and, and everybody else. And we just start over because we have stuff to do in this community. We have projects going on. We have lots to do. And the level of bad vibes going on down there sucks, man. And you have an obligation, you all swore, every one of you have sworn oath to uphold and defend the Constitution, not your egos, not your, your power plays, not developers, not anything, the Constitution of this country, of this state and, and the city charter. And, and you guys are all neglecting it. And it's shameful what is going on down at City Hall. It is shameful to have to hear that I, I am taking up my time because I'm lumped in with some sort of next door app. I'm deeply offended to have been lumped in or anyone to be lumped in for publicly commenting. It's our City Hall. It's not yours. Nobody on that dais has the right to shame anybody for publicly speaking in this body. And, and I expect to know an apology immediately from the, the council member who said that with that acrimony in their voice because that is unacceptable to this community and this body. It shames it. And that bad vibes gotta stop there. You can hear it in my voice now because I don't like the toxic energy down there and it's gotta stop. And I don't know what you need to do, but maybe you all need to resign because this is nonsense. Thank you very much.
Next is Craig Hill.
There we go. Hi, everybody. I'm sorry I missed whatever happened today. I was getting my first jab. Two topics. Homelessness is a complex issue and fairly universal, not fundamentally a Malibu problem. So I think the main thing should be to coordinate with the county. We should be working hand in glove with them, not making up a plan on our own. For example, what is the flow of people towards their transitional housing program? What's the nature and timing of that? Do they need us to accommodate people for 24 hours or 24 months? Do we need 10 beds or 100? This is mainly the county's work, so I suspect our best role would be not determined by resident survey preferences and so, so much as the, the county's parameters. So remind us all, is anyone on the council currently working with the county on this on a daily basis? Or is there some county initiative that needs more public support that we should be hearing about and weighing in on? Bill Winaker's comments about a committee did sound helpful, but let's, let's, let's help the county. To the extent the city has a role, it should probably be in coordination with the COG. That might imply a shared shelter somewhere relatively close to Lost Hills Station, but away from residential areas. Among other things, this would obviate the possibility that a Malibu shelter would be an attractive spot close to the beach. It would be better in a no man's land between Mulhall and Lost Hills, somewhere where it's not viewed as a destination. Because if it were, it would be filled to capacity, like always. Second, I, I'd like counsel to ask that Attorney Cotty provide a brief memo of citations to primary statutory and or judicial authority defining several concepts over which there's been a lot of confusion lately. One is, how many votes are necessary when a quorum is less than five? Between council and the planning commission, the so-called rules on this seem to have been shifting with different rules for applications versus ordinances versus appeals, et cetera. I'm not the only one confused and, and that's my point. Similarly, under what circumstances can a minute order be used? In 10 minutes of research, I did not find statutory authority. I did find this from the Institute for Local Government. Quote, "For less important actions, local agencies may act by motion which may be summarized in a minute order." I imagine you'd agree that not much of the council's business is of less importance. To be clear, I'm not necessarily asking Mr. Cotty to take time for a disquisition tonight, but that he or Trevor put together a brief memo of citations to the primary controlling authorities on those items, the quorum vote requirements and the minute orders, so that we each can better inform ourselves. In the meantime, until we have that greater clarity, you might consider continuing any items that raise quorum vote or minute issue concerns, if those could possibly be material to the outcome of any more important matter. I wanted to say one other thing, but I think I'll just, I'll, I'll let it go for now and I hope things go more smoothly tonight. Thank you. Bye.
Next one here from Lance Simmons.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Lance.
Okay, great. Stability and decorum are key cornerstones to a functioning representative democracy. It is critical that we encourage political discourse, even in the heat of disagreement, to remain amiable so as to render compromise on the most contentious of issues. For the past several months, considerable animus has substituted for comity here at City Hall. It must cease. I must note that the actions of Councilman Silverstein have defied this simple proposition. Personal recriminations against fellow council persons, questioning their motivations and or intentions, accusing them of unethical, if not illegal, activities and besmirching any semblance of comity in this august body have been a constant refrain in the heat of disagreements. It is simply unacceptable and juvenile. As a lawyer, I'm sure that Mr. Silverstein appreciates some rather elementary and perfunctory legal concepts. For instance, the concept of innocent until proven guilty, or the concept of facts as opposed to innuendos, and even more basic, the concept of evidence itself. Let me refresh what should have been taught in some of his early law school classes. Whether initiating proceedings or defending them, the first step for a party is to gather all the possible evidence that must be, that may be relevant to the matter. Clear, simple, to the point. It is one thing to allege an action, quite another to prove it. And if you suspect the illegality or unethical behavior, there are appropriate forums in which you can state your case. This is not the forum for libelous insinuation. John Adams is often credited with the famous quotation in light of his defense of soldiers in the Boston Massacre. Facts are stubborn things. And whatever may be our wishes, our inclinations, or the dictates of our passion, they cannot alter the state of facts and evidence. There is that pesky concept of evidence again. Lastly, Carl Sandberg was said to have uttered the following. If the facts are against you, argue the law. If the law is against you, argue the facts. If the law and the facts are against you, pound the table and yell like hell. Well, there has been a lot of yelling over the past several months, which suggests that the higher the disciple level, the further from the truth we may be. Each one of you has the solemn responsibility to represent all the citizens of Malibu, not as some would suggest, merely those who voted for you. So on behalf of the citizens of our community, being a professional entails more than donning a suit and tie. It requires a demeanor that promotes professionalism in the way in which you argue your case. Thank you.
Thank you, Lance.
Next is Colleen Baum.
Hello? Hi, hi. I'm sorry, I'm going back to the earlier meeting. I'll be quick. After all the, the conversation, I had a thought about the difference between transparency and clarity. And that 86 pages of council policy up on the website is transparent. There's no clarity. There's no organization. You download the document. You can't even search it. I know how to make the documents searchable. I do it. If I don't search the right word, I might miss a policy relevant to whatever I'm looking at. So once again, anything you guys can do to organize it better and, and on every policy or if the resolutions, you should be linking to the minutes, the video in the archive. If it's a 30-year-old policy, it needs to be re-discussed because obviously there's no history, no context and clarity on those. In addition, council handbook that you guys all get when you become council members. I have so many times had questions about your responsibilities. I don't think it's online. I would like that to be online. Also, a mayor's responsibilities, I think the only thing on the website is, you know, about the term. What is the responsibility of the mayor? What can they do? What can't they do? I mean, I've seen mayors for 20 years representing the city on TV, in public. I'm very curious about that. The last thing is about mayor. I would take the proposal one step further and make it about merit. And I say that because I just heard from Karen at the last meeting that council policies weren't reviewed because she had no quorum because a council member wasn't showing up at the meetings. So when it's time to bring the next mayor in, I would like to see on the agenda every council member's commitments to committees. Are they showing up? I want it to be based on merit because I know that, you know, sometimes there are some council members who are, are a bit derelict in their duty. And I would like that to be public and I think mayor should be on merit. And we should see what you all are doing for our city. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen.
Next is Ryan Embry.
Thank you. I attended the meeting that was a special city council meeting at four o'clock today to I guess, try and push forward changes to the city's policies, the council policies. And as dramatic as that meeting was, it's funny, it was really, it was Paul who ended up running the meeting and Karen who mischaracterized the whole meeting. And I'm calling you out, Karen, on that because I just looked at the agenda and you said it wasn't. And actually, it is and was not a study session. It was a Malibu City Council meeting at 4:00 PM. It was a special meeting of the city council. And you tried to spin it the other way. And that was really disappointing because I have, I have higher expectations of you as a person. I voted for you. And that scared me that, that you were pushing this and even trying to downplay an official city council meeting with the city attorney there and everything. The only person I didn't see there was Riva. So I don't know what's going on with Riva, if, if she's on administrative leave or if she's in the meeting tonight, but it doesn't matter that a policy is old. There, you don't need a date on a, a policy that says thou shall not kill. You just, you don't need a date. You can't call it old or outdated. That doesn't mean squat. It, the policy is what the policy states and they don't all need to be changed. Maybe fix a typo here and there. But again, that was being pushed way too hard. There's nothing time sensitive about those policies that they had to be rushed and thrown at a 4:00 PM meeting when a lot of working people could not attend the meeting and comment. And I want to, I'm making these comments here and now because a lot of people didn't know. They thought the meeting is now and they want to comment on it now and it's not on this agenda right now. That was a four o'clock special meeting of the city council today, which I identified as at the most, when a workshop should occur, which is a less regimented, you know, two-minute, three-minute limit type of a forum. So I'm concerned about these policies and wholesale gutting of them, revoking them and not proposing a replacement and saying, yeah, it's covered by state law somewhere or administrative code somewhere. Those codes can change. Those could be repealed and they're less specific to Malibu than the policies that the citizens of Malibu. than the policies that the citizens of Malibu and the city council created and adopted and are currently in effect. So I wanted to say that clear and, you know, you can apologize on your own time Karen, but you mischaracterized why we were getting together earlier.
Next is Carolyn McCloskey.
You there, Carla?
Yes.
There you go, I hear you.
Okay, so I'll just make this quick. I don't know how you guys do it really. I don't think anybody's derelict in duty. I can't believe the hours and effort and time and patience you have in very trying situations. So I admire all of you for that. Obviously, it's not working because we have to fix a lot of stuff. But I just, I sent this an email to all of you. I don't know if you had a chance to see it. I think we are missing the point of the four o'clock meeting and what was supposed to happen there. It was supposed to be because Bruce and Steve's agendized item did not get heard or discussed, that it was put onto this committee that Paul and Karen were in. They're supposed to come back and talk about how they are going to deal with transparency and the suggestions from what they had in this proposal. And somehow it got to be all these fifty-one resolutions, which is not what we should be doing right now. I mean, they probably need updating, I'm sure they do, and need something which can all happen much later. Your hands are so full with things. We have the homelessness that Craig and Bill Winnaker were talking about. We have the picasso.com about party houses or whatever that Lloyd was talking about. We have so many issues that are important right now. These resolutions don't need to be handled right now. It's a huge undertaking. Each one should be discussed, and it can be done much further down the line. And what, the only thing, that's why Steve asked to come back quickly, was as soon as possible, was to discuss the issues of the transparency that had been brought up, that had never been discussed or given any time. And speaking of time, I will stop because everybody on the council and everybody else, really watch your time. It's very difficult to do anything when people go on and on and on. And just keep it short would be the best idea, and they can be addressed later. I know it's difficult. You want to address every single item and every point, but it just, nothing gets done this way. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you Carla.
Next is Bill Sampson.
Good evening.
I can hear you Bill.
Yes. Two of the five of you voted to permit motels on my street and in other neighborhoods. A third was recently elected and supports that effort. Two of you, I believe, do not. The administration of the regrettable decision to permit motels here lacks a couple of things. One is, I have been unable to ascertain from staff whether or not there's a public repository. I don't really feel like continuing to ask for public records and file public records requests to find out who's asking for permits, who has the permits. I also don't believe that staff is monitoring Airbnb at all to see if the permit numbers are on the ads. I brought this up previously. It was a regrettable decision. I realize I'm stuck with it. However, I cannot find out which of the motels being operated on my street actually has a permit without relentlessly asking. One is in the middle of permitting right now, and staff said a question I had was going to be reviewed by city council. That was back in January. I have heard nothing since then. It's really, besides the annoyance of having them here, it's hard to deal with what you have already passed. Next, there's been a lot of concern about ethics and what have you. This afternoon's earlier meeting was about that. Regarding the motels in my neighborhood, I first approached the council about seven years ago. I discovered last week that two of the then-members of the council who refused to do anything about enforcing the then-existing law prohibiting such enterprises in residential neighborhoods were in fact listed on a short-term residential website as endorsing the operator thereof. I do, there was no indication on that ad that they were former council members. Actually, it said mayor in the case of one of them. There was no indication that they were former officers. I don't know how they got there. It is evident that their names were used, their likenesses were used, quotes were attributed to them as mayor and council member endorsing something they were studying at that time. That sort of thing shouldn't happen. I believe that it absolutely prejudiced the short-term rental ordinance before us. But I would just like to be able to not bother staff with public records requests. So if there's some place that I can just go look it up on my own, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you Bill.
Next is Lester Tobias.
Okay, I'm unmuted.
I agree Lester, yes.
You guys haven't heard from me for two years and all of a sudden, twice in one day, I apologize for that. But our last fire rebuild started construction, so I came up for air and found out this crazy things that have been going on while I've been trying to help rebuild half the western Malibu. Anyway, a couple, just real quick things. I'm confused on the recusal thing that's going on here with Steve and I heard maybe even with Mikey on the Malibu end. I know the agenda is later, but I just want to make sure that people understand that it doesn't make sense to someone like me just because these guys have already voted for things in the planning commission when they were planning commissioners, if it comes before them as city councilman. You know, we voted for them for city council because of their votes in the planning commission. And so to lose that vote seems kind of nuts to me, and I don't know how it's been resolved, but I just wanted to say that. And then I also just want the city council to know what an amazing job Yolanda Bundy is doing as the head of the building department. I see you're on this list, Yolanda. It reminded me that I wanted to, I can't come before you guys like I normally could to say this. And I'm a big critic of a lot of people in the city, but I also step up when I see people doing things that I've never seen before, above and beyond the call. And I also want to say, one of the great things about Yolanda is like, I've been sending some of my younger architects in to do stuff that I normally do, and she just works with them and treats them with professional respect, and it's just fantastic. So I just, I wanted to say that. And I also wanted to just congratulate Richard on becoming the planning director. He will be one of the best planning directors we've ever had. So that's my three cents worth. Thank you.
Thank you Lester.
Everyone else that was signed up is not in the meeting, so that concludes public comment.
Okay, thank you very much. City manager update, unless there's a commission or committee update I don't know about?
Good evening, mayor and council. Nice to see everybody. I'll start with our COVID update. Today, we had five hundred and sixteen new positive cases in Los Angeles County, bringing the total positive cases in the county to one million two hundred and fourteen thousand. We have decreased to a 1.7% testing positivity rate. So you recall when we were having the surge, we were over 20% here in the county, so definitely a positive there. In Malibu, we have three hundred and eighty-one total cases since the pandemic broke out. And I apologize, my dog is in the background barking there, and seven deaths still here in Malibu. In the county, we are in the red tier, so you are seeing things starting to open up again. And to register to get a vaccine, if you are in a tier one A or one B, you can go to myturn.ca.gov to make an appointment. My tip there, pro tip, is just keep hitting refresh on whatever system you're trying to get an appointment, and they do pop up. City staff is also available to help if you're having trouble. We can also help any senior resident, and we do have transportation available. On our Woolsey Fire rebuilding statistics, we now have three hundred single-family homes that have been approved by the planning department. We've issued one hundred and seventy-two permits and twenty-four properties that are fully complete. We have about five more that will be done soon as well. And thank you Lester for your kind remarks about Yolanda and Richard. I agree with you wholeheartedly. This week is tsunami preparedness week, and as part of that, on April thirteenth, we will be having a community meeting to discuss tsunamis. And so do encourage everyone to attend that, particularly those who live along the coast. Also, to give you a save the date, on April seventeenth, the Los Angeles County Committee on School District Separation will be hearing our school district separation application. And so we certainly want people to be involved. We'll be doing quite a bit of outreach to the community between now and then. We're collecting stories, and there's all kinds of information on the city website. So please, if you're not familiar with the school district separation project, and you'd like to learn more, get involved, please visit the city's website. Our general fund grant application, the applications are due back to the city by March thirty-first, and this is for the grant cycle that starts on July first. And it is with great sadness that I am going to announce this evening that our beloved city clerk Heather Glazer will be moving on from the city of Malibu. She'll be starting as the city clerk for the city of Mountain View. And I just wanted to take a moment to thank Heather for all that she has brought to my management team, to our city, to our community and our residents. She's just an absolute joy to have on our staff and has brought so much to us. So for that, I thank her. She will be greatly missed, and I'm sure you all join me in wishing her and her family the very best in their next adventure. And then Mayor Lieutenant Jim Braden is on the call. If you had any public safety-related questions, he's available to answer them. And that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we're to city council member comments, and we have Steve's hand up.
Hey, thank you Mikey. I agree with Heather's comments, I mean, with three of his comments about Heather Glazer. I only met her when I started running for city council. She was excellent. And I do, you know, we're going to miss her. She does a heck of a good job. I've learned that being on city council is a very scary position. This is the second meeting in the row that I've agreed with Lloyd Ahern. And if I had told people that like, you know, six months ago, they would have run me out of town on a rail. But he's right. I mean, I read the article from Steve Lopez about the bill on cameras, and I think that's a very good idea. And this is probably the third or fourth time I've heard about this time-share process beginning to sort of filter its way through Malibu. So I think at some point in time, we got to take a look at that and see how that fits in because that's the same thing as short-term rental, you know, we're doing is finding another way to sort of classify those things. Prior policy meeting, we had the meeting at four o'clock, I think it was. If you haven't watched, you got to take a look at it. I think it was interesting, and you know, one of the things that we had set the meeting up for was to do accountability and transparency. And I asked Paul and Karen to give us a list of those transparency and accountability issues they had built into the plan. So if I get that, I will make sure I get that out to everybody. I guess the question is, Riva, are the permit numbers for Airbnbs displayed on the websites? Do we know?
They should be. There was an issue with Airbnb and their software, and we did contact them. And as far as I know, I haven't checked in the last few days, but that has been remedied, and I see Trevor jumping in there. Trevor.
Yeah, I believe that they were listed, but it was not in an obvious spot, and staff has been working with them to make that more obvious. So it's easier to see that it's being displayed, but it is being monitored by host to make sure that those numbers are up on those those host site listings.
Very good.
I'll double check right now.
You know, and just, I want to just second Bill O'Keehan's comment regarding an ad hoc committee. If the other city council members are willing to do that, I would encourage us to put that together. I think Bill and some of the people he's working with can really help us find our way through this homeless issue. And I've got just one other comment. Over the next week, I'm going to do my best to put an item on our next meeting agenda that will call for a vote to make our details of our closed-session meetings open to the public. And let me tell you why I'm doing that. Now, I'm seventy-four years old, and during those seventy-four years, I've had the opportunity to learn a lot of things from very smart business people. Ninety-nine percent of those business people believe that when an employee wants to leave, you follow a protocol that has become a standard practice in the industry. As quickly as possible, you change the passwords on their computer, you escort them to their desk, you collect their belongings, and they leave the building. Now, you're not doing that because you're mean. You're following that protocol to protect your organization. You want to protect the morale of the employees who are left behind. When you have an employee who wants to leave, bad news travels fast. You want to protect what you have, you want to protect your organization's data. You don't want someone cleaning the files before they leave. And you want to send a message to your shareholders, or in this place to our residents, that you are placing the protection of their interests above everything else. Riva sent us a letter saying she wanted to leave over fifty days ago. Why haven't we had some action on that process? I can't tell you. Have we followed the advice of the subject matter experts who may have come before us? I can't answer that question either. Have any of our closed-session decisions placed the city at additional risk? I can't tell you that. And are we on a path to a resolution of this issue which will protect the long-term interest of our city? And I can't answer that one either. If I were you, I would want to know the answers to those questions. And if you were me, you would understand why I think it's vital that we make those answers, answers to those questions available to the public. So I'm going to try and get it on the agenda. Let's see what happens. Mikey, back to you.
Okay, Karen, I think you had your hand up next.
Thank you. First of all, regarding public comments, Lloyd, thank you. I also saw that article about the speed cameras. Picasso.com, that sounds like a fractional interest company. And I don't know if this is the appropriate time. Trevor's nodding his head. That doesn't sound like something that's allowed in our residential neighborhoods. But I don't know if this is the right time to talk about that. So maybe we can address it another time. Okay, please.
Sure, I can just briefly say it's something we're looking into. Depends on the controlling documents for it, and Picasso is an expanding operator, run into them in a few different cities. So we're looking at, any conflicts would be with our code and how that would shake out. They generally don't allow any Division B, you know, any larger than eight different people. So each individual person would technically have rights to use the property for over thirty days. So I don't want to get too far down the road. It is something we're investigating and taking a look into and, you know, what the options are, whether it complies with our code and whether a code amendment would be needed if this is something the city wants to take action against.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I definitely want to know more about that. Bill Winnaker, thanks for your comments. I know you've been concerned and have told us so. I think you've been invited to participate with a homeless working group, but I would like to extend that invitation again. Or maybe you and I could talk about this sometime soon. I'd be more than happy to do that. Craig Hill, working with the county, we do try. Unfortunately, this whole issue of dealing with homelessness has been left to cities to deal with piecemeal. What the county is doing is not addressing our needs, obviously, or we wouldn't have all these, I don't know what to call them, gaps in service and ways to deal with the growing homeless population. Lance, thank you for your comments. I couldn't agree more. Ryan, I'm not trying to spin, but I'll get into that some other time. That meeting was called a study session, and yes, it was a publicly noticed special meeting. Bill Sampson, I'm going to surprise you. I agree with you. I don't know if those former council members are aware that their likenesses are used on a commercial website along with their titles. I would like to think not. But that also surprised me, and if I ever find anything like that about myself, I will change that and correct it. As far as what's been keeping me busy, the usual garden variety of meetings, homeless working group, Contract Cities Local Advocacy Day, Policies Review Ad Hoc Committee, selection Policies Review Ad Hoc Committee, Selection Committee Meeting for the Wagner Affidavit Investigation, School District Separation Ad Hoc Committee Meeting, the COG, Policies Review, again, LA County Library Commission Meeting, Contract Cities Board of Directors Meeting, again, Policies Review Ad Hoc Meeting, Contract Cities Local Advocacy Day, School District Separation Ad Hoc Committee Meeting. Yes, very important date coming up, April seventeenth. That is a Saturday. It's a special meeting that has been calendared by the Los Angeles County Office of Education, the County Committee on School District Organization. Anybody who wants to contact me, please do. I'd be happy to talk to you about it, probably more than you ever wanted to know. And there's also a lot of information on the city website. I too am very sorry to see Heather Glazer go. She has been the consummate professional and I wish her the best. I thank her for everything she's done with the city and I wish her the best in her next endeavor. And I also want to acknowledge and thank the sheriffs, the VOPs and everybody that responded to that crazy situation we had last night on the highway with the truck. I was told, I don't know if this is true, but there was a hostage in the truck. They crashed into all these parked cars. There was a chase. They were stopped in Ventura County. So thank you very much to law enforcement and the VOPs, probably the share, the the fire department as well for the response. From my house, it was just a crazy at least hour of sirens. And thank you all for keeping that situation to what it was and not not being worse in terms of property or loss of life. That's my report.
Paul, I believe you had your hand up. Oh, you're muted. You're still muted.
When I got today's agenda, a few last week and looked at it and decided it was time to sit down and tackle it, my first reaction was not what a huge imposing pile of paper it was. It was that obviously there are several city employees who do nothing but put our agenda packets together for us. And to have all the pages arrive properly numbered and and legible and references to past meetings with those included also properly done, it's really makes our jobs a lot easier to to research all this stuff. I still went out and watched videos from previous planning commission meetings as well, but it's, it's a real gift to us sitting on the dais to be able to have the research at our fingertips. And that leads into thanking Heather for her service with the city and she has been nothing but kind and helpful to me and and everybody else I've ever talked to and certainly kept us in good shape. Yolanda has been an angel to the constituents I talked to who had questions. They, you go to Riva, she gets Yolanda involved. Yolanda basically loves our citizens and tries to make things work out for them. And I really appreciate that kind of attitude at the city and so, and I also wanted to say that I agree with Steve Lopez, which doesn't happen very often. And I think that we obviously have a problem and if it takes cameras on PCH to make a dent in people's disrespect for the city of Malibu on the road, I think it's a good idea. And that's about it, I think. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Bruce?
Thanks, Mikey.
Sure.
So first of all, Heather, yes. Heather was the first city employee that I had the pleasure to deal with when I decided to run for this position. And I probably have interacted with Heather more than any other member of the city staff. And she has always been spot on helpful and courteous. And I'm going to be sorry to see her go. So Heather, thank you for your service. Lloyd, also, good comments. Both of those issues are worth pursuing. This Picasso issue, you know, it's very clever. It's a clever corporate strategy. And Trevor, I think we need to jump on looking at what we can do to clamp down on that as quickly as possible before vested rights kick in too many places. So I'm hoping that that's something that we can explore because if that's something that we want to prevent, we're gonna have to look into preventing it now, not five years from now.
Absolutely.
Bill, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I would say absolutely. It's also difficult to unwind once the property is already in multiple owners', you know, hands. So.
Right. It may, it may be that we'll be stuck with whatever has occurred before we do something about it, if we do something about it, but we can at least look forward. Bill, I think an ad hoc committee for the homelessness issue makes a lot of sense. In fact, the working group structure right now, you know, it's interesting because I think there are two city council members who participate on this informal working group, which means under the Brown Act, the other ones are by default not allowed to participate. And that really should be something that should be a determination in the first instance by the city council as to who should participate on that, if anybody. So I'd like to see that occur. It also brings some more formality to it. Hamish or Hamish, the public is critically important to me. I always appreciate all the comments written and oral. And if you were offended by a comment and haven't received an apology and it wasn't me, I understand your, your, why you're upset about that. Craig, I actually don't agree that we should be working hand in glove with the county necessarily. I think it's important to know what the county wants, but I also think it's important to make sure that the county doesn't want us to pick up their burden because we contribute substantial taxes to the county and the county is supposed to be helping us, not the other way around. So to the extent that we should be working with them to find out how they can help us, I completely agree, but not to the extent, not to find out what they want from us, to find out how they can help us. The issue of recusals, there'll be some discussion of that later perhaps. I agree with the comment that it doesn't make sense to me that just because somebody was on the planning commission, they have to recuse themselves when a matter that was before the planning commission comes up before the council because council decisions are made de novo. We're not looking at whether the decision below was incorrect. We're looking at whether to grant the application. And that's the same analysis that was done by the planning commission. The, I asked the city attorney about that issue and I did receive some case law that I was told supported the proposition that a recusal was was appropriate or required. I'm not convinced by reading the decisions that were provided to me that that's the case. I think that a city council member has the discretion to determine for his or herself whether they will be biased or not biased by virtue of their prior experience. But by biased, I think that means have a reason other than on the merits to decide the merits. Not, not that they have a particular position on general merits of a matter. As long as they haven't foreclosed being persuaded otherwise, I don't think a recusal is required. Now, just quickly, I'll go through this. Last week, there was a matter voted on to investigate me. I was recused from the, from the discussion in the vote and that was appropriate. I stepped off. I watched it on Malibu TV. This week, Lynn Norton sent a letter to the editor. It's short and I think it's worth reading. She said, "Council members Pearson and Farrer asked the city council to consider hiring an outside firm to investigate the city manager's allegations of harassment from council member Silverstein. It's noteworthy that Riva Feldman and Bruce have never worked together and have communicated only by email or in public forums. It's not like someone has made an allegation and now we need to investigate to find out if the bad thing really happened or who's telling the truth. This isn't a situation like Andrew Cuomo. Nothing happened behind closed doors. Everything's been out in the open and public. I'm adding that. Instead, the city would be paying someone to give an opinion about emails and meeting videos that are easily available to all of us as to whether things Bruce said has said constitute harassment." What, and by the way, as far as recusals, it was interesting. The mayor, before I even was seated, went on publicly stated during one of these meetings that I was guilty of harassment. Not necessarily the legal version because that's not the same thing as what an ordinary person thinks it means. But I don't know why he didn't recuse himself from deciding to screen investigation of me when he'd already made his opinion quite clear. What Lynn goes on to say is what would make more sense to me is for the city's fiduciaries to do is behind closed doors, ask legal counsel whether they could comfortably defend the city against a harassment lawsuit, given the circumstances. Then privately use that advice to inform their decisions, not to publicly inform the person who may soon be suing the city. Perend, since Riva wrote her letter of complaint, there have been about five closed session meetings, agendized with the heading anticipated litigation, close quote. Okay, now, this is me. I think it would be worth the city, the city residents knowing whether the city council has or has not done just that already and what, if anything, they've heard. She goes on to say, "The only possible scenario where the public opinion for hire might serve the city is if there was an obvious zero chance of an opinion of harassment. But given Pearson's and Farrer's visible nail spitting, mind clouding disdain for Bruce Silverstein, I can't help believing they're hoping for and rooting for a professional opinion that Bruce is in fact bad." And I think that's right. I think that's what's going on. When council member Euring pressed Pearson on the game plan, should the outside firm opine harassment, Pearson haltingly produced two answers. One, we would then realize we had liability and then we'd ask an attorney what to do about it, which is stupefying to do publicly during actual pre-litigation negotiations about the city's liability. This is not my words. This is Lynn's. And two, voters might want to recall Bruce, a statement which Pearson then claimed during had pushed him into saying, despite the fact that Pearson said it out of left field. And I watched, watched, he absolutely did. He was not forced to say that. He was actually being truthful. She says, bingo. It seems Pearson and Farrer would have the city pay for a public opinion that it should be sued in hopes of motivating a recall of Silverstone. Now, this is me. If, as appears to be the case, Malibu, the council majority is using this situation as an opportunity to spend taxpayer dollars to fund the underpinning of a potential recall effort. It's a violation of law and it also violates the city's ethics code, which was adopted as resolution number ninety-two eighty-nine twenty years ago. Separately, how can a subordinate of the city manager possibly oversee the process of selecting outside council and working with them as the client representative on a matter involving her superior? Also, the city council majority should be required to state whether they already have received the legal analysis they now have voted to pay for. The city's represented by a law firm that has employment lawyers already. Have they provided any advice to the city council? Has the city council consulted with any other lawyers already? What, if anything, have the city's lawyers advised respecting the best way to deal with the city manager's threats? Is the city council majority following the advice of its lawyers or disregarding it? Whose advice, advice, if anyone, are the majority following? I know they don't have law degrees, so where are they getting their legal guidance from? As I've advocated in the past, the proper approach, this is consistent with what Steve Euring just said, to dealing with the city manager is to call her bluff, remove her in accordance with provisions of her employment contract. Pursuant to that contract, she's entitled to six months severance so long as she provides the city with a general release of any alleged claims. I doubt the city manager will follow through with her hollow threat to sue, but if she does, she'll be subject to motion practice that will include an anti-slap motion, discovery controlled by a court and not by her, and the ultimate challenge of making out a claim that's factually flawed and legally unfounded. If the city manager is as good as her supporters claim, she should have no problem securing a new job elsewhere. Personally, I doubt the city manager is as competent as her supporters give her credit for. If she were, I would have expected her to have been hired by Calabasas, which recently terminated their city manager for corruption and went through an extensive search for replacement. Given that the city manager lives out there, it's difficult to believe she didn't apply for that job unless, of course, she knew that she would never get hired, given their knowledge of her reputation among the Malibu community. The silver lining, however, in all of this is that the decision to hire outside lawyers to evaluate the situation will also require that those lawyers take a good look at the city manager's conduct in evaluating whether my emails support a legally viable claim. And I say emails again because that's all there is, that and some recordings of city council meetings, including this one. I've not met with the city manager or spoken with her on the phone. All of our communications outside these Zoom city council meetings are in writing. I'm confident that a competent and neutral lawyer, if one is hired, will conclude I've done nothing unlawful. I also believe a neutral assessment of the situation will result in a determination that the city manager's treatment of me in the weeks following the election was unprofessional and unbecoming of a city manager. So I look forward to getting that result, even though I do believe that a majority of this council is misusing the city's, the city taxpayers' money in funding a litigation, in funding an effort that has only one purpose, which is to hopefully secure a basis for seeking a recall. And I think they should let the public know what, if any, legal advice they've already received and what it has been. Thank you.
Interesting spin on it. Good night, everybody. I want to address the speakers first. Lloyd, excellent point. Myself and Chris, the head of the Public Safety Commission, Chris Frost, met with Jim and our captain Becerra several months ago, a couple of months ago. And one of the subjects that came up was something called the Flock system. And the Flock system is technology that I had not heard of where you can place devices in various places, whether the highway or canyon roads, and they automatically record license plate numbers. And they can do a number of things, including tell if there's a warrant, obviously speeding, et cetera, which the idea there being that when issues happen, we have, we are able to pursue it further. That system we are gonna look at for funding. It's not overly expensive, but you know, has to go through our process nonetheless. That was one of the requests that Captain Becerra asked of Chris and us, when, Chris and I, when we said, "What can we do to support you? What can we do to help with better law enforcement and protection in the city of Malibu?" And that was one of them. Another one was the car at night, which we have approved already. Another one is the item that's on hold now is another car during the high usage times. And I see Jim there and I'll, I'll, I'll give you the mic here after I'm done. If that's okay, Jim? So, well said, Lloyd, and totally agree with you. And there are, there is some technology out there that we can be very interested in. Bill Winaker, thanks for your comments. I, you and I have talked about this, obviously, or not obviously, I'm making it obvious. And I think if the council, it's council, it sounds like there's consensus to look at an ad hoc committee on this. When I talked to Bill, my thought was that would wait till we had, knew where we were going a little further, but actually now hearing it, maybe now is the time. So I would be, I would like, I think I already saw consensus on talking about I, agendizing, talking about an ad hoc committee on our homeless situation. Can I, okay, see one hand, two hands. I see hands everywhere. Okay, so. It looks like we got consensus. Thank you, everybody. Craig Hill, I think someone brought this up already. Yes, we, one of you nailed it. I can't think of who, but yes, we have talked with the county quite a bit and you want to be careful. I can tell you that what they want us to do might not be what everyone else wants us to do. I'll leave it at that. And the COG, I was mentioned too by Craig. They have provided us Gabriel, who's been a huge asset and I think it was mentioned, something about reaching out to COG cities involving dealing with our homeless issue. That was actually something we all voted on already at our homeless special meeting. And the city is reaching out to nearby cities to see if they want to discuss homelessness with us and solutions. But that also includes beyond the COG, includes the Topanga area, it's not a city, but an incorporated area, and the Palisades, which is the same. And both have, I gather, city, not city councils, but that's another word and I'm forgetting it right now. So yes, we are doing that. Obviously, I want to echo the thoughts on Heather. Thank you. Thank you, Heather. You've been amazing. You've helped me so much. Particularly reminders on all the forms and when they're due. That's super helpful. Yolanda and Richard, you're both doing such an amazing job. It's Yolanda and Richard, you're both doing such an amazing job. It's, it's so noticed by the residents and, and building professionals, and it's such a big difference, and just can't thank you enough. Couple other items here. I got a, I think we all got a couple of emails today on the hero pay for store workers or for, our market workers. And I don't know much about that, and I don't know the accuracy of the email, to be honest. I did not have time to research it. But apparently, if what was sent is true, the city council has to, for some reason, approve that, which I understood to be a county program. So I'm a little confused on that. I'd love to get clarity on that because clearly want to stand up for our frontline workers where we can. So I would love to get feedback on whether we need to, if we to do that, what involved, if we need to agendize something there and see how we can support them, but I don't know much about it. So hoping maybe for some staff help on that, if that's possible. I also want to take a minute and talk about a meeting I was in last week involving the Firefront Follower Program. And this is the program where we have been working for almost two years with LA County Fire on a program where citizens who decide to go through some training can be recognized by LA County Fire and be part of the solution in these large emergency events. Complete change from what we experienced in Woolsey, a dramatic change. As some of you know, I talked to Chief Osby right after Woolsey about citizens staying back in some capacity. It was a hard no, and it's really encouraging to see that that is now changing and, and is changing in a big way. And what we're trying to do would be historic. It's not been done. So in brief, our group, which we are very lucky to be led by Brent Woodworth and the Los Angeles Emergency Preparedness Foundation, who, as you know, he's done reports and analysis of disasters all over the world, including nine eleven. And a few residents went down to meet with nine fire chiefs last week and proposed this program that we've been working on with Chief Smith for quite a while. It was Matt Haynes from Corral Canyon, Chris Frost, and Keegan Gibbs, and myself. And just in brief, I think what we encountered was a group of chiefs that were there pretty much probably to say no. And by the end of the presentation, they were all pretty much saying yes. So we made huge progress, which doesn't mean we're near to being able to do this, but it's a pilot program for at the moment, six neighborhoods, including two outside of Malibu, that are all related to the Santa Monica Mountains. And it was, it was pretty exciting to get that far. A program like this has never even got this far before. So keep you updated on that and let you know more when we know more. But that was pretty exciting. And the last thing I wanted to do is take a moment and try and be positive here and commit to my positivity and a tough situation we've all been going through lately, and just talk about things we have gotten done recently. And there is a huge amount to be done. We're all aware of it, but I just want to go over some of the things that we've managed to get done as the city council since the Woolsey fire. And I'm just going to cherry pick from a huge list, but we hired our fire safety liaison. That was huge, a new position. We adopted earth-friendly pest management system, our, our earth-friendly pest management, sorry. We approved the dumpster enforcement program. We moved to a hundred percent renewable energy at city facilities and then the whole city. And I can tell you, being on the Clean Power Alliance, that our city is pretty much the highest in clean energy of any city in Southern California. So that's, I think, fantastic. We started offering a home hardening assessments for Malibu residents as part of our community wildfire preparedness. We hired a consultant to start our coastal vulnerability assessment, which any of you following anything to do with sea rise know how big of an issue that is. We earned an award for transparency and excellence in financial reporting for the eighteenth time. We approved a study for our, beginning of our community wildfire protection plan. We already mentioned, we hired the amazing Yolanda Bundy. We received thirteen point seven million in the settlement from SCE. That was huge. The city completed the Malibu Lagoon Coastal Geomorph, oh, that's a big word, geomorphology and hydrology study. We also, on December twelfth of nineteen, approved the pesticide ban in Malibu. And we know what a long, hard trail that's been. The city council got that done. We also adopted our draft evacuation plan, a big issue, working with the county now. It's in the COG, by the way, the COG's version. Parking restrictions at Tuna Canyon, that was a big moment. We know how bad that situation was, it was disaster. Adopted a fire-resistant landscape ordinance that Karen brought forward. We partnered with Core to do COVID testing early on, did over five thousand tests. We extended the Woolsey fire fee waiver to help residents rebuild and we're visiting that item again tonight. Still got a long ways to go. We adopted an urgency ordinance, enacting temporary restaurant recovery program to help local restaurants recover from COVID nineteen or just survive it. We published our city emergency survival guide, and the guide is great. It was a smaller version than the old one. And some of us went out and passed it out neighbor, neighbor to neighbor. I was up in the Big Rock area doing that. We, of course, have voted to reinstate the city's petition for unification of the Malibu Unified School District. And as you know, that is moving forward against, it's a difficult, difficult project, and you know about April seventeenth, it's been talked about. We got parking restrictions at Corral and Zuma implemented. Another great accomplishment. It wasn't easy. A big one that I'm really excited about, and I talked about before, is Charmley reopened after extensive repairs from the Woolsey fire. And I just want to encourage everyone to take the time to go up and walk around. It's actually really, really cool. Done a great job. It's really coming back. It looks good. We actually adopted ordinance four seventy-two, the hosted short-term rental ordinance. That was big, difficult. We adopted ordinance four seventy-eight. It was actually in the election, increasing transit occupancy tax by three percent from twelve to fifteen. We got speed humps on Fern Hill and Doom installed. And if you haven't actually driven over them, they're genius. I don't know why they're so well done. They slow you down, but they don't knock your teeth out. I'm not sure how it works. We've also tackled small cell wireless facilities. That's been a huge lift. A lot to it. We're still doing it. It's, it's still ongoing, but we've taken that on and much needed. We got a FEMA grant to look at doing a siren system as part of our wildfire preparation, especially for when power goes out. We did have that second homelessness meeting and pushing forward on solutions there. We have a long ways to go, obviously. We approved the four-month trial with additional two sheriff deputies in the nighttime shift. And I think we're already seeing results there, which is great. And two last things, waived the permit fee to finally get that parking for Malibu's farmers market going. Steve, thank you. And the oversized vehicle ban going into, or just having gone into effect. So as much as is going on and as hard of a time as we've had, we have gotten a lot of things done. And together as a group, as a city, with citizens and staff, we can get a lot done. And I am committed to pushing on that front, and I want to thank staff. I want to thank our city manager. I want to thank the city council for all the work. This is just a very partial list. So we are working hard and trying to get a lot done. And I think with that and that's partially, I just want to give a shout out to Hamish. Bad vibes. Well said, and I'm going to do what I can to turn them into good vibes as best I can. I am committed to that. And with that, Lieutenant Braden, would you like to say a few words? Can, can you unmute? Are you trapped in mute land?
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Okay. We're in business. So I'll play off what the mayor has said. So even with the homeless meeting, in, in, like, it's a work in progress. However, I'll play off that you guys adding for a two-person extra patrol car. In the first two weeks of March, that netted approximately fourteen arrests, multiple sites. And what that does for you, a regular patrol car, it responds to calls. It handles tra, there's traffic cars, there's regular crime cars. With the directed patrol and the people I put into that car, what you have is a highly productive car. It actually almost plays off kind of what part of Bruce's plan does in that it pinpoints people that are potential public safety risk to the residents of Malibu as long, along with the tourists and everybody else. And the that car not even counted in that fourteen, because I haven't seen their, their stuff for the week. But I know on Friday night, they had an arrest, and it was regarding a person that looked like they were breaking into a vehicle. Well, when all was said and done, there was a hundred six pieces of evidence booked. Three of it were mountain bikes stolen. There was social security information for several people. There was mail from several dozen people. And there was methamphetamine, heroin, and this is a vehicle staying along PCH. So that vehicle is no longer along PCH. The, so these guys are highly active, and I put them in the car because there's some of the best cops that are stationed. There's some of the best cops in the county. So I'll continue to report on their progress, but it has an impact. And they actually get out of the car. They talk to the people owning businesses. They can pinpoint problems as they arise. So I think even without, you know, a full plan for homeless things, you guys have stepped in the right direction along with the parking limitation signs, the oversized vehicle ordinance. I had the deputy start citing for that, and so that'll be a work in progress. Some of the holdout motor homes are, will work on as projects and try to even have the signs be more effective than they already are. The, I'm open for any questions anybody might have. I appreciate what Karen said. Our job can be very dangerous at times, and that person yesterday coming through Malibu that was highly intoxicated, driving a large vehicle and still, still being determined if it was a hostage or if it was a person that wanted to get out, but actually was threatened with a knife and actually got out of the car while it was still moving. They're very dangerous situations. And there was another pursuit on Friday night. That was, I was the watch commander that night. And basically, it was a person wanted out of Texas for, with a full extradition for first degree residential burglary, who, he was stopped on a traffic violation, who decided to leave the thing. And that, that was a pursuit from wayway to about upward Joffre's was. The people come into town, the thing you have going for you is, a lot of these deputies are highly active and they know what to look for in criminals, and they're active in their, your community. Does it prevent everything? No. But you guys are on the right page of adding somewhat to patrol to where I can direct it towards specific problems in Malibu, and I appreciate that. As on, what you guys were talking about, the cameras, the person regarding those block cameras, is going to do a presentation for the Public Safety Council in the first week of April here. And then they can report back to the council on that. Any questions? I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you so much, Lieutenant. Any questions, councilors? Well, thank you. We really appreciate you. Appreciate you and all, and all your, your whole team.
Thank you, James.
Thank, we appreciate all of you also.
Onto the consent calendar. Does the public wish to pull any items on the consent calendar?
It looks like item three B six is the only one that has been pulled in the public.
Great. Does the city council wish to pull any other items? Bruce?
Three and four.
Three and four. Oh, Steve?
I've just got a very quick question on five, so.
I'll put a Q by it. I don't know. Okay, so do we have a motion on three B one, two, and seven?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
I'll second it. Can we have roll call on that, please?
Councilmember Euring?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Gersanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrar?
Yes.
Councilmember Silverstein?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, three B three. I believe Bruce, do you pull that one?
Yes. My, my request is that we table this one until the next meeting. This is ninety-six pages, single-spaced minutes that we received on Thursday at the same time as we got the policy provision. So I just haven't had time to look through it at all. If others have, they're better than I am.
Is there consensus on that? I'll second that.
I'll second that, yeah, it's a good idea.
Yeah, I, I agree. It was a lot of reading at the last minute. We didn't have any public speakers on this, so we have a motion, we have a second. Can we have roll call on bringing this back next time?
Was that a motion by Councilmember Silverstein?
Yes, it was.
Okay, in your seconding?
There was, give it to Steve, he can, it doesn't matter. Whichever one you like best, how's that? That's a total joke.
Councilmember Silverstein?
That was yes.
Councilmember Euring?
Good, good guess, Heather, yes.
Councilmember Farrar?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Gersanti?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. Three B four, did you pull that, Bruce?
I did. So I've got a question and some comments depending on the answer to the question. Am I correct in understanding this adds a half a million dollars to an existing three million dollar contract?
Correct.
Okay, so that's a sixteen and two-third percent increase, approximately a sixth of the original fee. And I understand it's additional work. It's my understanding also that this is going to be billed ultimately to the property owners, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, so how, other than getting the general city council agenda, did this, did the property owners who are going to have to pay for this additional half million dollars get any specific notice that they would know that they've got an opportunity to come here and argue for their rights?
The only notice would be this council meeting.
Is, I, I don't think that's fair, but if that's the way the law works, I guess that's okay. The other, the, the comment I'm going to make is that, and this pertains to the Wagner affidavit that I get so much flack for. There's an issue in that affidavit about low bid contract. Oh, was this a, was this a RFP, like, a low bid that was accepted?
No, this is qualification-based, professional engineering consultant contract that was, that was awarded to this consultant.
Okay, I just want to point out, this is an example of how contracts can change after they've been approved. There are many other ways. So Trevor, do we, do we need, do the, do the residents who are going to pay the cost of this need to get any kind of special notification?
No, there's no legal requirement for it. The, the Sussman district is not formed at this point in time.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Paul?
I'd just like to point out that the additional work in here is a result of things that were learned in the process of doing the original work. And that's why the, the amount of the, the scope of their work increased. So I don't see anything improper in it.
They'll also have a chance to vote when the assessments just gets formed.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, so I think we're done there. And then 3B5, Steve, you had something?
Yeah, no, just.
We need to vote on that, I think.
Oh, what do we, what do we vote in? Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry, sorry.
I'd like to make a motion that we pass 3B4.
As written. Right.
Right.
And a second by Bruce, I think?
Yeah.
Thank you, guys, sorry about that.
Councilmember, you want a roll call here?
I think yes, Heather.
Okay. I think my key is frozen. Okay. Mayor Protem Gresanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrer?
Yes.
Councilmember Yurey?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. 3B5, Steve, you had something quick?
I mean, I, you know, I don't, I don't know, I don't know anything about the housing element issue. All I'm, I remember somewhere back in my history, we had a big to do about how we get this done. I'm just asking if Rich would make sure he keep, if there's speed bumps that are coming at us, if Rich could let us know what those are so we start thinking about them before we get there, that would be helpful. That's my only comment. Other than that, I will move this item.
I, I have a, I, I have a quick question on it too. Not really a question, more of a comment is that we get these numbers every so often and they're reported. What, what is the next step and our responsibility for meeting these numbers? How does that work? Or not work?
Justine, would you like to explain that part of the process and how we're working towards the current revision?
Sure, I'll, I'll address both. So in terms of things coming down the road, we're in the process of updating the housing element for the next planning cycle. And we should be hopefully announcing our first workshop here very soon where we'll be talking about that and going over, there's been a lot of new laws since the last house, housing element, the landscape has changed pretty dramatically. So we'll be talking about all of that and updating the website as well to kind of make sure people can get that information in, in a variety of different ways. But certainly if you have any questions, feel free to call me anytime. That goes for anybody. If you have any specific concerns or you hear something in the wind that you think maybe might need to be concerned about, but you're not sure, just feel free to give me a call. And then in terms of these numbers, then the next step is that we report them to HCD and OPR. And they check them and, and that they check our progress against RENA, our, our previously assigned RENA number. And that goes into things like how we interact with SB 35 and, and stuff like that. There won't be really a significant change from previous years in that regard. And then starting, I guess, next cycle is when the, these housing numbers will go towards our new RENA number, which was finalized, I think, two weeks ago.
And also, just to add on quickly too, as part of the report that you're receiving this evening, if I'm not mistaken, there's a table at the back that also includes our progress on the various programs that we there were a number of programs the city stated that it would do to either maintain existing housing stock, promote the growth of housing stock, or however to assist individuals find housing. We, we track each of those programs that we put in our previous housing element update. And we do a little synopsis on where we are with each of them and the city's actions.
And my question was maybe are there consequences to not achieving the numbers or making enough progress toward them? How was, how does that, how is that treated?
There are. And the laws have been changing so that the consequences change, it seems like every year. But like I mentioned, one of the main ones is how we interact with SB 35. And so because we've met or exceeded our goals for above market housing, we're only subject to some parts of SB 35. But because we haven't met our goal for the two units of low income and very low income affordable housing, we are subject to permit streamlining if a project proposes 50% affordable units and meets a couple other criteria. So that's, Trevor, you can jump in, I guess, if there's anything else big that I'm missing, but that's kind of the big one, really.
Yeah, our RENA numbers, you know, we were lucky, a lot of people got hit a lot harder than us. And our consultant is going to come back. That's the whole point is they're going to bring back a plan to deal with this. And, and you'll get a good chance to, to take a look at it in detail then.
Right, I know the laws are changing quickly on this. I just would love to be kept, kept up to date on this area because I know, well, there's a lot going on at the state level that impacts it. And just anyhow, Paul?
Would it be fair to say that the $18.6 million we voted to pursue at the last meeting is the carrot? And we're about to find out what the stick is?
Don't know.
Yes, I think there are many carrots and sticks beyond those two things, but yes, that, those could be, the $18 million is a big carrot. The state requires many sticks. We also have sticks and carrots and, and that will be something that we go over in the housing element workshop as well. There's a lot more sticks and carrots in the bus, in the basket from last time. So I'll, I'll try to break that down as best as I can when we do those workshops.
I'm looking forward to it.
Now it's like a cooking show.
It feels like it.
And lastly too, with Justine and our consultant, they're also on top of, is we are making certain to meet our deadlines on these helmet, housing element update requirements. If you don't meet your deadline, the punishment there is an accelerated cycle of having to do more updates. And so we want to keep the city out of that and we meet our deadlines so that we can get that maximum time period between updates.
Okay, thank, thank you all very much for that. Can I get a motion?
I'll move to mo- motion, move that item.
Bruce will second. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Yurey?
Yes.
Councilmember Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrer?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gresanti?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we're at 3B6, and I know a member, at least one member of the public pulled this. Can we have a brief report and then we'll go to public comment?
Um, good evening, Mayor Pearson. I don't know that I really have a report. We discussed this on the, I believe it was February 22nd. Now I'm going to have to refresh my memory. Yes, February 22nd. We brought back a resolution per the action that the council took, which was to extend the guideline, extend the fee waivers for an additional year. And so that's what you have before you is that resolution.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, let's open the public hearing now. Who do we have for speakers?
You had one speaker, Howard Redsky, but I do not see him in the meeting.
Okay, well, that certainly moves us along on that then. Oh, and Bruce, do you have your hand up?
I'll move that we approve this.
Okay.
Second.
Steve seconds.
Oh, no, 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 I got a question.
Oh, sorry, Steve doesn't second.
Yeah. I mean, look, when we did this, if you read the resolution, the resolution says waiving the fees will only be applicable to owners of properties that are being built like-for-like or like plus 10%. And as we talked about the last time we had this, that's not what's going on. You can come in, give them a like-for-like I program, and then build, do serial development and put another 1,500 square feet on it the next day, and they'll give you the fee waiver. And I didn't have a problem with that. Okay, but my, my, the concern was, does everybody know about that? And how are we letting them know? And there's that, I thought when we left the last meeting, they were going to come back with something in the resolution and the ability to let residents know that this was available to them, and we don't have that. So I, yeah, I mean, I looked at the numbers, you know, the exposure numbers, I think are right on. I just want to make, I just want everybody to be treated equally. That's all I'm trying to do.
Right, I think, as I remember, we were talking about updating, there's a website for it, is that correct, Richard?
Well, when we left, it was going to put some, some language in the resolution to deal with that and then do whatever we have to do to inform the public. That's what I was looking for.
So the action that the council took did not include, well, it did not include putting into the resolution something to that effect. It actually, council, you did make a friendly amendment, but it was not incorporate, it was not recognized or incorporated. And instead, council discussed having staff make sure that we put in our materials what, on the website, on the flow chart, the planning uses, making sure that we let everybody know what was available to them. But it didn't, it did not specifically get requested to be put into the resolution.
And maybe my memo wasn't friendly enough, but I thought it did. Can we do this? I, look, I'm not, I'm not, I don't care about the program. I just want, if we're going to have rules, they should apply to everybody. That's all I'm trying to do. Keep, treat everybody fairly.
Okay, Paul?
Have, Lisa, do you know whether or not staff has incorporated it into the materials yet?
That's a question for Richard, and maybe he can answer.
Richard?
Yes, we are making certain that we have our flow chart up as we showed in the last meeting that shows all the rebuild options available to the, the public. Our staff knows to also give those options when they meet with people. And I'm taking a look at the resolution now, once again, and in the, if I understood the direction correctly at the last meeting, and I, and I feel like the resolution reflects that, it's that we were going to give people the ability to put the house back plus 10% and then come back and do the subsequent application. But that we would only be waiving the fees for the, the portion of the house that was put the house back plus 10%. So, and, and that is what we say in there. We don't make it specific to just the folks who are, I think, to address Councilmember Yurey's concern, which is, don't set up a system whereby some folks are able to get the 10% waived and other folks aren't. If they, you know, if somebody comes in, I'm sorry, I hope I'm explaining this well, but what Councilmember Yurey's concern was that somebody would submit for a fee waiver, get their 10%. And then some folks then came back subsequently and added on to the home. You know, that we made sure that we gave that ability to everybody and.
How do you make sure of that, Richard? That's my concern, because I can't find anything in writing. You got a, a flow chart, I don't know how the people read the flow chart. But what do we have that I can show people that says, here's how you do it? That's all I want to do, make sure they're all getting a fair shake.
The, the chart is what we use. When we sit down and meet with somebody, that we found that the flow chart was the easiest method when we met with the public to walk them through the steps and show them what's available to them. We found that to be more effective than just sentences in our application.
Yeah, and, and my only concern is this, look, I mean, you know, at least in my experience, leaving things undefined is an opportunity for mismanagement. You know, I mean, it's an opportunity to, if I like you, I'm going to tell you about it. If I don't like you, I mean, I'd give you that information. And I don't think that's what we want to do. I mean, I like, you know, like I said, I just, if we got a rule, let everybody play. That's all I want. So you guys, you know, you've heard my pitch, you guys do what you want.
Bruce?
My vague recollection when we discussed this last time was that we all agree it is a develop, you, you could get the fee waiver when you first come in, if you're doing a like or plus 10%, and that you don't lose the fee waiver by coming in later and getting some more added on. I thought what was going to happen was if someone comes in with a plan to do something larger than 10% more in the first instance, and it's something that could have been done where you first propose it with the like-for-like, and then you add on, the staff would just explain to them like, like in a coffee shop, hey, if you do it this way, you'll get, you'll get a break. So why don't you do it this way instead? I, I thought that's what we agreed was going to happen.
And Richard's on his head, yes, and.
Oh, yes, kind of like when you, I, I think to go along, Councilmember Silverstein's comments where if you get the menu in front of you and you order something, the staff will say, hey, but if you do it this way, you know, it's a, it's a better deal for you.
Right.
And, and I'm, I don't share the, I'm not concerned that some, someone's going to be disliked by the staff. I'm not going to get the, the courtesy of being told that. I, I trust the staff to tell them.
Good.
Paul, you had a comment?
I was going to say something along the lines of Bruce just took. So let's, I don't know if you were ever seconded, Bruce, but I'd like to second this motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call, please, unless there's more comments? Can we have a roll call? Okay.
Councilmember Silverstein?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gresanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrer?
Yes.
Councilmember Yurey?
I, I'm going to stay, and I just think we can do better.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. And we are through the consent calendar.
Yay.
Wait. What's that?
No, sorry, excuse me.
Okay. We are now to item 4A, updated developer fee program.
I'm sorry. Sorry.
Okay, updated developer fee program for the benefit of the Consolidated Fire Protection District of Los Angeles County. And we have a report, please.
Yes. Good evening, City Council. I do have a presentation and I'm thinking Parker can do that. This evening, I bring to you the updated developer fee program for the benefit of the Consolidated Fire Protection District. Next slide. This is a regular and annual resolution that is brought to council every year. The last resolution was adopted by council on March 9, 2020. Next slide. This developer fee program generates funds for capital projects necessary to maintain fire protection services within the district. This fee funds the acquisition, construction, improvement, and equipping of the fire station facilities within the district. Without this fee, the fire station construction and equipment will be outpaced by development. Next slide, please. And a few background for you. On July 12, 1990, the County of Los Angeles adopted that resolution to establish a developer fee. And as of 1990, this, the county implemented a developer fee program for Malibu, Santa Monica Mountains, Santa Clarita Valley, and Antelope Valley. On February 12, 1991, during the city incorporation, it was agreed that the board will establish the Consolidated Fire Protection District. Next slide. On January 26, 2021, the board conducted a public hearing to update this developer fee program, including a revised fire station plan and developer fee summary. The current Malibu, Santa Monica Mountain area rate is .9705 cents per square footage of new development. It's important to mention that this does not apply to any of our fire rebuilds or any additions. And no changes is proposed this year. The county administers and collects a fee. Next slide. Under this agreement between the city and the district, the city must adopt by resolution the updated developer fee and fire station plan within 60 days of the board adoption. We reg, the recommended option for this evening is to conduct a public hearing. And second, to adopt by resolution number 2111, coinciding with resolution 20-11. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions before we go to public comment? Okay, seeing none, do we have any public speakers?
One speaker, Ryan Embry.
Okay, great.
Good evening.
Good evening. I don't think anyone who really knows me would ever say that I am not a massive supporter of. Los Angeles County Fire Department. And so my comments are only related to what happens to this tax on new square footage. Of development that occurs in the city of Malibu. And if you recall my statement on this issue at its anniversary, I think one year ago, and probably also two years ago. Is that we don't see any of this money. We have suffered some horrendous fire losses, and Mikey appropriately stated. That the city, and I think, I'm sorry, it was Bruce. The county keeps a humongous percentage and a higher percentage of the property tax collected. From city of Malibu residences than in other cities. And the residences here are, you know, valued high. So there is a big pot of money. There's no question that the county has fought us against incorporation many times because of the golden goose. And this money, though, does not directly benefit Malibu. And I believe it is not required. Yolanda said it was required. It, it may be. Part of the collection agreement this, that you have going with the county. But it is not required that we adopt and do this program, or the fire department won't come and put out our fires. I, I think that is a totally different thing. The city of Malibu has some direct needs that were identified because I think Keegan Gibbs. And Mikey Pearson saved several Malibu families' homes from. Destruction during the Woolsey Fire, and they did it with their own two hands and with the help of others. And there are local needs for this money, which. If it's a dollar a square foot, I think Yolanda could tell you, maybe that's a hundred thousand square feet a year, maybe it's two hundred thousand. That's two hundred thousand dollars that could fund another person or. Someone like Jerry Vandermeulen, who can do fire assessments of individual residence properties. It could fund portable generators that are for unanticipated needs and locations for deployment on the spot. Satellite internet data service for city hall, you know, city hall had to shut down recently because. The internet stopped working and they phones stopped working at city hall because of that. Hughes Satellite makes satellite-based internet data systems, and we need one for city hall, maybe for Bluffs Park. So we have local funding needs, and I would suggest you defer this item and develop your own plan in-house. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
You have no other speakers?
Okay, we're back here at the council, and I see Paul's hand is up.
I'd like to point out that we have recently, within the last ten years, gotten a new fire station. At Point Doom. I know that the, our current fire stations are being amortized and. Will need to be replaced, and the funds for that will come from this program. I also know that the fire department is constantly updating their communications. Infrastructure, and I imagine that that is also something that is coming out of this pot of money. And I don't believe that this is an optional program. But I'd be glad, delighted to be educated on that question. Thank you.
Okay, Karen?
Um, yeah, I have a question based on the comment we just heard. I, I guess this is for Yolanda, maybe it's for Riva. I mean, is there leverage that we have? To avoid paying the county on this? And it, is it required?
My understanding is through the agreement that the city did on nineteen ninety one. The city agreed to pay this fee to be part of this fire protection district. And yes, the program is within Malibu, Santa Monica Mountains, Santa Clarita Valley and Antelope Valley. The, I was reviewing the fire plan that the county proposed for this fiscal year. And at this time, the acquisition and new construction, it will not fall under the Malibu area. But as I mentioned on the report. This fee also provides the equipment of the, of the fire station facilities. I do not have the amount that I spent specifically on the fire station that covered the Malibu area. Which I possibly can get for you.
Thank you, Riva. Did you have a comment?
Uh, no, I do not. I just wanted to make sure you got the answer you needed.
Okay, okay, and I see Paul, your hands up again, or still, or I'm not sure which. And you're muted? You're still muted?
What I wanted to say is that our fire protection is, is an interconnected network. And the fact that we may have fire people and equipment located in Agura. Or in somewhere else nearby. Those peoples protecting their area ultimately serves to protect our area as well, and because of the. I'm trying to remember the name of the policy where we all have to support each other. Having more firemen anywhere in the county works to our benefit.
Yeah, Bruce?
Yes, so the page, the final paragraph of the staff report says, under the agreement between the city. And the district, the city must adopt by resolution the updated developer fee and fire station plan within sixty days of the board adoption. I had taken that to mean we're doing something ministerial here, because it's already been agreed to in a prior. Agreement or resolution, and we now must do this. I, I guess I'd like to hear from Trevor whether that's accurate, because if that's accurate to me, it's, it's a no brainer, our hands are tied. We only have leverage or anything that Karen asked about if that's not true. So Trevor, is that correct? We must do this?
I believe that's correct, that this is the, the updates required by the agreement, but I don't have the agreement in front of me. If you want to continue it to have us explore that, we're happy to do so.
Mayor, if I could just jump in, the nineteen ninety one date references are LAFCO formation. So these were things that were agreed upon when the city incorporated.
I remember this from the past, yes. Okay. So, questions, motion? Bruce?
Can we approve this subject to council confirming that this is obligatory?
I think the option is we don't pay it, we leave the, the fire protection district, is what I think is the option. But.
You'd have another bite of the apple next year. Are we, do we have enough time to continue it for a meeting if they wanted to? Let's still meet our obligation here.
I don't have that date. Paul?
We do not have enough time. If we're supposed to do it within sixty days, we do not have enough time. I, I would like to move that we go ahead and adopt this resolution number twenty one dash eleven as proposed.
I second.
Okay, and I, I would agree to it, Ed, and maybe we could get a little more education at some point. A report, just to make sure we understand this. All right, we have a motion, we have a second. If there's no more comments, I'll call for a roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Gresanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrar?
Yes.
Councilmember Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Yury?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much, everybody. We're now going to skip to item seven A. Council appointment to the Parks and Rec Commission. Karen, I'll let you.
Okay, thank you. My previous Parks and Rec Commissioner, Rob Wells, had to resign due to other commitments. And I just want to thank him for the many hours he spent, particularly with the temporary impermanent skate park. So with that vacancy, I put my thinking cap on. And my appointment, I'm very happy to say that she said yes. Is somebody that's probably known to many people in the city. She was born and raised here. And she and her husband are now raising their three children here. Her name is Alicia Peak. So I'm very happy that she's agreed to go on the Parks and Rec Commission. She's very much an outdoors person. She's a high school math teacher. I've known her since she was three years old. And she's a great person, and I think she'll make a great Parks and Rec Commissioner.
Great, alrighty. Thank you, and with that, I'm going to call for a brief recess before our last item. It's, I show eight twenty-six, so let's try and be back and. How long does anyone need? Five minutes, six?
Five minutes.
Five minutes is fine.
Five minutes is perfect. Okay, everyone, you can, you can turn off your video and mute and see you back in a few. Okay, had a little quick popcorn with the family. Best part is my dog loves popcorn, and I toss it real fast and he goes. Very unique way of eating popcorn.
Mike, a very quick question for me.
Yes.
Bill Wenelker's ad hoc committee for homes, I think, we're going to bring that back to the next meeting. Is that what we plan on doing?
I don't know if we said next meeting, but we did say bring it back. Let me write that down. Maybe.
I'm just saying, if you need a second, or if, if somebody else to co-sponsor that with you, I'll do that. So just do what you got to do, but I'm, I'm on your team.
Okay, okay, sounds good. Yeah, I'm glad Bill spoke. That was good. One, two, three, four, five. Okay, looks like we're back. It's eight thirty-four. And now we have item four B, and before we hear item four B, which is appeals number nineteen dash oh oh four. Nineteen dash oh oh three, appeals of planning commission resolutions number nineteen dash nineteen and nineteen dash seventeen. At two two eight five three Pacific Coast Highway. I think we're going to have a discussion about possible recusals.
Yes.
Okay. Who wants to go first on that? I can go first, or you can, Steve? I know you and I, are we you and I around planning commission?
Yeah, we were on the planning commission. We both voted on that. I mean, so, I mean, and then you got, so there's. Whether that requires a refusal or not, somebody else smarter than me has to say that. You know, Paul is on the board of the Malibu. Or Chamber, Chamber of Commerce. Melbourne Beach Inn is a member of the Melbourne Chamber of Commerce. Does that impact his? I don't know. I mean, I, I don't know all the rules for recusal. All I'm saying, this is, you know, Bruce and Karen, there's only two people that are clean. Everybody else has got something that may be coming in front, and I don't know how to deal with that. So someone smarter than me has got to give me some direction on this one. I don't want to help Mike, you're hurt, but that was.
Well, I don't think I, I could speak about it, but I think we should let Trevor speak about it.
Sure. Mayor Pearson, I don't believe you actually voted on the decision that's under appeal here, correct?
That's correct. I think I was elected before that, and so I missed the vote. I did not vote on it. I heard the item. I know we had, I'm going to guess a couple of meetings, but we never, we never did vote on it. And also from reading the item. it has, it has morphed a bit since what came before us, so it's not exactly the same item. So, as I never voted on it, um, I do not believe, I'm biased in any way on it.
Well, but I think, Mike, what we did with that meeting, we sent it back, we sent them back and told them to change whatever they were doing. We voted as opposed to canceling it or whatever, you know, voting no, we said, "We're gonna give you an option to go back and fix some stuff", and they went back and did that. I think that's what happened. Could be wrong there.
Yeah, I don't know. I lost track of it after that, to be honest. Yeah, Bruce?
I understand there's been a change since it was last heard as well.
Yeah, there's all sorts of changes. But I, I mean, I, look.
So, yeah, I generally, as I understand it in the past, the, the dividing line has been if you voted on it or not. But that's just what I know. I'm not gonna be an expert on this, this subject.
I can provide a little background.
Okay, thank you.
That's helpful, as the council looks at this issue. So due process requires that the city provides the applicant with a fair hearing, and this means that the city must provide a neutral and unbiased decision maker. And the standard for that is that there cannot be an unacceptable probability of actual bias. And so, the, you know, one of the lines that the city has had in place, I'm not aware of it being, being crossed, is that when it's your own decision that is being appealed, that shows an unacceptable probability of actual bias because you have shown how you will act on the project and you've actually made a decision on it, and it's that actual decision that is being challenged. It's like a trial judge, you know, appealing, having a, his decision appealed to a court of appeals judge. And so, um, for commissioner, I'm sorry, for council member, I apologize, council member hearing, this decision is actually your decision that is actually under review right now. For Mayor Pearson, while he did attend, while he did attend a number of the hearings on this item, the project changed substantially, including reducing the size of the pool and the number of parking spaces there. And he did not actually make a final vote on the project, and he didn't advocate against the project. So that is sort of the, uh, the difference here, so...
How about for Paul, how about Paul being a member of the board?
I don't believe Paul has any financial interest. Is there any financial interest here that...
The Melbourne Chamber, I believe you gotta pay to be a member of the Melbourne Chamber of Commerce.
Uh, yeah, Paul?
I have not attended a board of directors meeting of the chamber since I filed to run for city council. And during the previous iterations of this project, I never spoke in favor or against either one, and I'm unaware of the Chamber of Commerce ever taking a position pro or con on this.
I don't think the chamber take a position, but there's certainly a... If I were a member of the board, I'd wanna be protecting my members, but that's just me.
Well, we could get into a long philosophical discussion on that. I think a lot of people join chambers to get exposure in town and do more business as opposed to other things. So I think there may be more answers to that. Bruce?
For whatever it may be worth, I, this is not legal. I'm stuck. Factually, I don't see, I don't see a conflict with Paul or with Mikey for that matter, based on years ago. But I, Trevor, I do question, you know, you, you gave an example of a court of appeals. Obviously, a trial judge whose opinion is being appealed, if they are elevated, wouldn't be able to sit on the appeal of their own decision. But here, as I understand it, the city council now is acting, this is, it's called an appeal, but we're acting on our own as to whether to grant this application. We're not deciding whether to reverse or affirm the decision of the planning commission. It's not a de novo review of their decision. It's a de novo determination of whether to grant the application or not. And in that circumstance, I, there's no such analog in, in the judicial, in judicial world. But I would think that as long as Steve doesn't have another kind of bias, a financial bias of some sort, the mere fact that he has already looked at the facts and formed an opinion previously in a quasi judicial setting shouldn't preclude him from being able to do the same thing again tonight.
Well, Councilmember Silverstone, you're, you're correct that this is not the exact same as that situation. But, you know, this is an appeal of that decision that was made by the, the planning commission, you know? And if, if, uh, you know, it's determined by a court that there wasn't unacceptable probability of actual bias in the situation, you know, that alone would be grounds to invalidate the council's decision on the item.
Here, here's where I am. I mean, I've said on a number of juries where I've got called for juries, and the judge always says, "Can you make an unbiased decision?" And depending upon what the case is, I'll either say yes or no. I think, I do think I can make an unbiased decision in this one, however. I do not wanna put the city in jeopardy in terms of having a situation where somebody can go back later on and said, "Because you were being a yako, uh, the Melbourne Beach Inn can come back and appeal this thing or do whatever the heck they can do with that." So if, if, if my saying that I can be impartial is not enough, I'll recuse myself.
You get to go drink wine. That's an advantage right there.
Well, I mean, look, they're, they're upsized everything, Mikey. So Trevor, I mean, look, I need... What do you think?
I hear you. Our advice would still be to recuse yourself on the item since it is your decision that is being appealed here.
Okay, that's, like I said, I don't wanna get the city in trouble. This has been around a long time. Hopefully you guys can get it resolved this evening. You know, I voted against it when it came in front of the, the planning commission. Based upon the staff report, I vote against it again tonight. But that's near the here and there. I'll see you guys later. Mikey, thank you very much. Been a good meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, can we have a staff report, please?
Certainly, Mayor. If I may have my presentation, please? The item that we have before us this evening is the appeal of the planning commission's decision on two coastal development permits that were proposed for the Malibu Beach Inn project. The, the application, as I just mentioned, consists of two coastal development permits. One that was filed for the Malibu Beach Inn specifically, and another filed specifically for a lot across the street, which we'll refer to as the Hertz Lot, the site of the former Hertz car rental. Two appeals were submitted to the city, and both of those appeals cited the exact same grounds for, for why the project should be reconsidered. And so, as part of this tonight, we are hearing it as one project, but and Trevor can correct me if I'm wrong on this. We have two resolutions, and so we would need two separate motions. Is that correct?
Could be adopted as, as one motion to adopt each of those resolutions, so that would be fine. I believe it's all under staff's recommendation if that was adopted.
Just wanna make sure it's understood that we have two here. So the addresses for these two properties are two two eight seven eight Pacific Coast Highway, that's Malibu Beach Inn, and two two eight five three PCH, which is the Hertz site. If I may have the next slide, please? In this picture, you can see the Malibu Beach Inn located towards the bottom or the south along the ocean. And to the right is the former Hertz site, which is proposed to be used as off-site parking. The actual topic of this goes to a proposed pool. And where that pool would be proposed to be located would be roughly where the arrow is pointing for the identification of the Malibu Beach Inn. And it would be displacing the parking that is in that area. If I may have the next slide, please? So to give some background to the project, this project was submitted a number of years ago. The original submittal was to have a larger pool that ended up taking up the entirety of that parking area and would then move more cars over to the Hertz site. And in addition, at the Hertz site, to accommodate a larger parking number, the project originally had included a number of variances to allow for reductions of setbacks so that car lifts could be placed on the Hertz property to double its capacity for parking. That went before the planning commission. The planning commission explained that it was unable to make a lot of the required findings. As a result, the applicant then withdrew a number of the variances. They, all of the, the parking variances, lifts in that proposal was abandoned. The pool was shrunk in size so that they maintained more onsite parking. And so what they had done essentially was remove a lot of the issues that were causing denial for the planning department because we couldn't make the hardship findings for the variances. They had eliminated all of that through their redesign and worked themselves down to a situation where essentially it was a matter of the joint use parking agreement and traffic studies on PCH and how that would function, as well as would we be able to approve the joint use parking agreement. Next slide, please? Since this was last heard by the planning commission, there has been an updated parking demand study and valet operations plan. Originally, there were going to be twenty-five parking spaces at the hotel site. Now there are thirty-six. We now know the exact location of the new crosswalk. The crosswalk was not installed or constructed at the time of the planning commission hearings. It was only on paper. And another situation has taken place is that the rental car operation has ceased, has ceased to exist. The results of these changes are that nearly all the parking, based on the traffic studies, can be accommodated on site. So this does result in fewer vehicle transfers between the two properties. And a valet plan has been proposed, which was discussed at the last meeting, but now it's more of an official proposal, that they plan to transfer vehicles during off-peak hours. So these would be evening or early morning hours. They would try to keep only cars on site that are short-term uses, so the restaurant visitors or if somebody knows they're gonna be using their car. The applicants explain that as part of the reservation process, they would be asking for the travel behavior or how somebody would expect to use their car while they're staying at the hotel, so they know which cars they could move off-site with the idea that those are less likely to come back on site during the day. If I may have the next slide, please? This is an updated survey and also parking plan of the Hertz site. And what you can see in this picture is that the path of travel is three hundred feet, as they measured it here. This is from a licensed surveyor. This was part of the contention from the planning commission meeting and also from the last, uh, time we had published this for a city council hearing, however, it was continued. But at that time, they did not have the one parking space right at the end of the three hundred foot measurement that you see there in the Hertz site. So that is a project revision to propose a car there. And the other addition that they've proposed is that three hundred feet, if you start at the car that's parked in the Hertz site, walk the sidewalk down the crosswalk, three hundred feet gets you just to the parking, basically. The applicant is proposing to put a entryway there for the valet, and that would become the, a valet area. So now the valet stand would be within three hundred feet of the proposed use. This is a question that is part of the discussion, the appeal. The, the council has some discretion here. The previous planning director, and I've followed through with keeping it the same way, has always looked at when, from the valet stand and not the hotel door. Prior to the last council meeting, the previous director and I walked the distance with a roll of tape, and we had measured to the valet stand, which is in the portico share, which is that little box area that you see in their parking lot there in the middle of the parking lot. And we had measured the path of travel to there and found it to be around three hundred and thirty, three hundred and forty-seven feet. And that was part of our basis for denial the last time this was published to be heard. So since we had used the valet stand in the back, I, in the past, I had continued that practice. If I may have the next slide, please? So tonight, if the appeal is approved and the CDPs that are appealed as well, those would be approved, that what you would see is not only would they be able to build the pools, we've been discussing, that seems to kind of be the bigger issue here, but I wanna make sure that it's understood, the project. So CDP seventeen ninety-one, which is the Hertz site, would allow for basically the restriping of the spaces, and we would have the spaces as shown below. There would also be new planters and garden walls for screening. Within the front yard, these fences and plantings would only be forty-two inches high, so that were consistent with the city zoning ordinances. And there would also be a new six-foot-high view permeable fence and gate along Pacific Coast Highway. And I should also mention that part of the reason for the garden walls and screening is actually to respond to the neighbor who owns the building directly to the east, the Roy Building, that is to the east of the Hertz site. On the hotel site, approval of this appeal would allow for construction of the pool, three hundred and sixty square feet. It would allow for the pool deck. It would also allow for the landscaping and patio, the hardscape that goes along with that. The modification of an office storage room into a bathroom and pool equipment area. It would, as we mentioned, displace parking, twenty-three parking spaces, and would also require the reconfiguration of the wastewater treatment system. And also, as I mentioned earlier, cutting that hedge to, to make the three hundred foot diff, uh, distance. I want to point out, though, that previously they had proposed a service area on that pool deck. But that is, if not up on the table this evening, if for some reason they want to get food service on that pool deck, they are gonna need to come back and file for an amendment to their conditional use permit. Because the conditional use permit was approved for the hotel restaurant service and the operation of the hotel. But they would have needed to appeal that CUP, which meant they couldn't have used it, which they have been using in order to have it heard tonight. So I just wanna be clear that the dining service is not something before you this evening. If I may have the next slide, please? This is another concern that was raised by members of the public and also by our city traffic engineer. And this is what our city traffic engineer is available to speak on this evening. It's essentially the, the movements of how these cars will go back and forth between the two sites, the integration of the crosswalk. Well, we have valet, valet attendants crossing the highway. The proposed plan is that the valet attendants would, um, time the travel in the cars so that valet attendants would ride back in the cars if cars need to be moved during peak times. Once again, our city's traffic engineer is available to speak with, to that more, as well as the applicant's traffic engineer is available. If I may have the next slide, please? So the items that are on appeal this evening is that the appallant feels that the planning commission's denial lacks evidentiary support. As I stated earlier, staff at the time of the planning commission hearing and prior to this being heard by this council, we did find that there was evidence that there were concerns about this not meeting the three hundred foot distance. And also the traffic report at the time, since the traffic impact study, since there were more parking being kept on site, or excuse me, more parking being moved offsite and not as much getting kept on site. Those were reasons why the planning commission had issues with this. Subsequently, as I mentioned, they've increased the amount of parking that will remain on site, so that it lowers that demand on offsite use. And so, that was submitted by the applicant, reviewed by our traffic engineer, and that is why there is an argument in the staff report that this finding can now be made, should the council agree with the proposed parking plan, and also should the council agree with the interpretation on the three hundred foot distance measurement. If I may have the next slide, please? Once again, these are similar bases in the applicant's appeal. They refer to the measurements for the crosswalk and also the amount of offsite parking being used, as I mentioned. They have made changes, and that is why our position on this has changed. They've kept more parking on site. And there's also, as I showed, the reconfiguration of the parking on the Hertz site and also the proposed headcut, head, hedge cut to make the three hundred feet work. If I may have the next slide, please? The appeal also claims that there is no evidence to support the... The appeal also claims that there is no evidence to support the planning commission's finding that the project is not the least environmentally damaging alternative. Uh because it worsens the non-existing parking condition. Once again, based on the traffic uh studies we had, the city's traffic engineer's opinion at the time. There was evidence to show that subsequently, the applicant has revised their project. So that they've reduced that need, as I mentioned, for the offsite parking. If I may have the next slide, please. There was also a claim paid that the denial violated the civil rights and equal protection under the laws. Because other projects uh were allowed to use offsite parking across P C H. To be clear on this, yes, the city has approved offsite parking for some projects. However, that parking has been on adjacent lots and on the same side of P C H. For example, uh V's restaurant uh for years had been using a lot on the west side of V's. Uh that has been legalized. Once it's on, it's directly adjacent to the restaurant, it's on the same side of Pacific Coast Highway. The Malibu Inn utilizes uh offsite parking and it's on the lot directly adjacent. There's no need to go on to the highway to go between the two lots. Soho and Nobu do have a joint use parking agreement. However, that's only for parking for Nobu on the Soho site in the same parking lot. All of the offsite parking that they bring up in that Nobu and Soho are utilizing in their uh appeal. That's all the subject of an open code enforcement action and staff is working with both of those uh operators and the property owner. To resolve that uh offsite parking because they are not supposed to be using other sites other than just the adjoining parking lots. So this would actually be the first time that uh the the council would be approving parking to go from one side of Pacific Coast Highway. To the other based on what we could find in a record of what the cities approved. So we were not able to find any evidence that the denial violated any civil rights. And also any evidence that there was a a lack of a fair and impartial hearing. Next slide, please. In summary, uh based on the revised materials, uh staff is recommending that the plant, the city council. Adopt the two resolutions which would grant the appeals, which would approve the two coastal development permits. The joint use parking agreement and then also just memorialize a lot tie. It's not an entitlement, but we want to memorialize a lot tie so that the two lots, should this be approved, would travel together. To make sure that um the parking is maintained. And if for some reason they decide to separate the two lots, it the pool is conditioned to be removed. So that their onsite parking could be restored back to what it was and we don't end up with a increase of the non-conformity. As I mentioned, I'm available for any questions as well as our public works engineers. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Um I'm going to ask for disclosures here for your uh public testimony. Paul, do you have any disclosures?
Yes, I spoke to Jeff Seymour who called me on the phone. Uh when I was in the midst of reading through this, uh he uh spoke for about ten minutes. About how this proposal is different from the uh planning commission. The the plans previously heard by the planning commission. Uh and he asked if I would take a look at the video. I advised him, I was planning to look at the video of the planning commission hearings, which I did, uh and we have not spoken since.
Okay, thank you, Karen.
Yes, I had a conference call with um Jeff Seymour and Ron Hirsch. And we discussed the project. Um I did not learn anything that was not in the report.
Okay, uh Bruce.
Um so I I have a question in addition to make disclosure. Let me ask you the question first. Are we going to ask questions of Richard before the presentations by the applicants, the opposition and the public? Or are we just going to make disclosures now and then go right to hearing from others?
Generally, if you have a couple of quick questions, we can do those for sure. If it's long, we should probably hear the public first.
If it's informational that you want to get out before the public hearing, then it'd be appropriate to ask before it's open. If it's more directed towards a deliberation type thing, then that should be wait till after the public has weighed in.
Okay, thank you. Uh so I had a, I I asked um Richard a number of questions in writing that he responded to. I told him that he was welcome to share them with other members of council. I'm not sure that's a ex parte of any sort anyway. And I very briefly, maybe for two or three minutes, spoke to John Maza to fi- ask some questions about some things that occurred below. And I didn't tell me anything that isn't in this report.
That's a number silverstone. Did you learn anything that was not in the staff report through your discussions with Mr. Malika?
Um I did, because I wouldn't have asked the questions of him that, yes, I did.
What what uh that what factual information did you learn that was?
I learned that I learned that there are multiple paths that I believe are appropriate paths to get from the hotel to the parking lot. Which are more than three hundred feet contrary to the path that is used in the example.
I suppose I I don't, you uh we don't share any analysis or anything, but uh what what where would the pass uh lie? Just so informationally, so factually that can be.
Okay, this is this is. This was going to be my very first question anyway. So if you look at slide five, can you pull that up? I had a number of questions about the pedestrian path in in slide five, separate and apart from the question of whether those are the proper starting and closing points. My questions were directed to if uh if you didn't map the walkway, the the pathway of the of the valet. Or whoever it is that's walking right on the border of the crosswalk where no human being walks. And then stop rigidly on the curb and walk on an angle. Instead, if you actually walked where normal people walk through the crosswalk. Let's call it a quitter of the way in because people go in two different directions. And then when you get to the sidewalk, you do the same thing. You step onto the sidewalk and you walk down the sidewalk like a normal human being. Um how many feet would that be? And I learned that it would be over three hundred feet. I had some other variations of that same kind of question. None of them came under three hundred feet.
Okay, all the pathways generally dealt with along this this route, then it wasn't an alternate route.
No, every single, every single one was a question about walking a little bit differently on this general path.
Okay, that's sufficient. Thank you.
Um the other question I asked, which Richard just addressed, but I don't know that it was in the uh materials was. What are the other properties that have offsite parking? How far are they? Do any of them cross the highway? And he gave the same answers that he just gave in the presentation. Richard, did I ask you anything else that I don't remember?
I I think that would be the the basis of, I think, uh some of the clear, some questions were clarifications uh on the staff report. And uh one other thing, you know, I I uh we didn't address in the staff report uh was if. The the council has been considering the parking as a standalone use and whether or not that would affect uh this application. And as I explained in the correspondence, which I I believe was distributed to everybody in the public. Um in that correspondence, I explained that no, uh the parking is a standalone use would not affect this joint use parking agreement.
And any that Trevor, I I it's all in writing and I I indicated that it ought to be shared if it's relevant with the other members accounts.
Okay, um let me just finish my disc- or do you have more of a disclosure, Paul? You're muted.
I wasn't aware that any conversation with Richard should be part of a disclosure. But if it should, I had a conversation with him after I had watched the uh the planning commission hearings. And I said, I noticed during the hearing that the developer offered to. Uh close the lot from seven A M. to seven P M. And not take any cars in or out of it during that time. Is that still something that's on the table? And he made a non-committal answer, but supposed so. So that's a question I'm going to ask later.
That that's not part of the proposed project right now, right, Richard?
No.
And then and then uh you don't need to disclose your contact with uh with the staffer with me. But it's just if there's any information that you would rely on in making your decision, you know, that uh should be disclosed before the public hearings, so it can be commented on.
Thank you.
And my disclosure is I had a Zoom call with Jeff uh and Ron from the applicant team. I wanted to discuss the across-the-street parking. Uh I didn't learn anything. They we we generally went over, they went over some aspects of the project, the pool. Um went over the parking and and driving across and it was an amicable conversation, but nothing that wasn't in the staff report at all.
You you also participated in a number of hearings and reviewed the the materials that were presented to the planning commission um earlier. I think you mentioned that before, but I just want to clarify that's correct.
I don't remember what year exactly. I think you sent it to me, two thousand seventeen maybe or. Certainly, the last one would have been two thousand eighteen. I don't remember the dates. Um.
It would just be the uh, it it would be the uh the items that I think that I think gets listed in the uh the resolution and in the staff report. Be those meetings, it was only as as uh your former role as planning commissioner.
That is correct.
Those materials and.
And I did also have a brief chat with Richard about the project. And once again, did not learn anything new, just wanted to go over. I actually don't even remember exactly what we talked about. It wasn't what, not that it wasn't engaging, Richard. It was just, it was uh, there was nothing new to be learned, really. That was always very known. Um Bruce?
Yeah, I'm just looking at my notes of questions for tonight and I'm remembering some additional things I asked and got answers to that aren't in the report. So would you like me to say what they are?
If if it's relevant to uh, you know, uh potentially you make, you know, uh the findings are required for the uh decision tonight.
I think they are. So I I I wanted to know whether a pool could be put on the roof, whether that would have been lawful. And I was told it could be, it it would have to be properly approved and and there'd have to be engineering and all that, but that there was nothing that would preclude that from happening. Um I wanted to know whether if the um owners purchased another property that is on the same side of P C H within three hundred feet. They could convert that property into a lot. And I was told that there would be various requirements that they hoops they would have to go through, but it couldn't be said that they that that was something that could not be done. Um. Those are the other things that I learned.
Ri- Richard, can you clarify if there are variants or anything would be needed uh to put the pool on the roof?
Certainly, if the pool, if the pool adds to the height of the building, offhand, I want to say, I believe the building is is taller than the city allows currently. Or if the pool were to result in an increase in height, that would be a variance uh that would have to go before the planning commission. And I don't know what engineering would need to be accomplished. Uh building and safety would be the experts on that. Uh but a a pool on the roof isn't precluded in our approvals and we would most likely process that. Uh I don't think there are any deed restrictions and so a pool, it could be a administrative plan review in front of the planning commission.
Okay, any more disclosures? Okay, I think we're good. Thank you, everyone, for taking the time on that. Um now, can we please go to public comments? And I assume we'll start with the applicant team. Uh yes, Bruce.
Well, I I have some questions. I am happy, we, I'm happy to defer them, but I don't want anyone to be able to argue that they didn't have an opportunity to hear them before they made their comments. So I'll leave that to you.
Uh I will leave that to Trevor on.
If there's anything that you that's just a question, you know, that related to deliberation that, you know, just needs to be answered um before the the public forum. So that could be commented by the public for its accuracy, that would be something that would be appropriate to raise at this point.
Tell you, it's a pretty subtle dividing line. How about I'll wait and ask the questions later or somebody thinks that they should have been asked earlier, maybe they can speak up.
Okay, all right, let's go to the public hearing.
As I understand it, Jeff Seymour will be speaking first for the opponent team. Jeff, did you want to retain any specific amount of time for rebuttal?
Yes, uh what we we will probably be doing, I I believe we have fifteen minutes.
Correct.
Uh I will try and take five. Uh Ron Hirsch, our traffic engineer, would take five. And then we would like to hold the additional five if we can for rebut. Uh that would be uh provided by uh Marshall Camp, our counsel.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you all, uh Mayor Pearson and members of the council. My name is Jeff Seymour with uh Seymour Consulting Group. Uh we are representing tonight Manny Brothers N L L C. Let me thank you for your consideration tonight. This has been a six-year path leading to this evening's hearing. Five commission hearings and three city council hearings and five hundred pages that we have given you to review. It's been our goal to listen to all the comments and input from staff commissioners and council members. And find a common solution that responds to the city's and hotels' rightful concerns regarding traffic and pedestrian safety. While supporting our request to build a pool for the exclusive use of our guests. I'm sure some of you will say if the Manny brothers had concerns buying a hotel without a pool. They should have passed on buying Malibu Beach Inn. I've known the Mannys for decades and I can tell you that they do indeed do their homework. Anyone making a significant decision such as this takes all the input and information available at the time to make the decision. Uh and so this was done with this hotel. Once the sale was made, the Mannys retained the services a nationally known general manager. Moved forward with substantial improvements to the hotel's guest rooms, lobby area and restaurant. In two thousand fifteen, the year the Mannys acquired the hotel, the average length of stay of the A L O S was two point three days. In two thousand nineteen, it was down to one point seven. Due to the loss of beach time, our existing guests have questioned our not providing pool service. In addition, international traffic uh travel agents, those that the hotel markets have made the same inquiry. Taking input from staff and reviewing commission and council concerns. We've reduced the size of the pool to increase onsite parking from twenty-eight to thirty-six spaces. We have dramatically reduced the number of vehicles to be valeted to the overflow lot with the maximum of eleven overnight vehicles on Saturdays. And unlike other businesses along P C H, we have found a path by which we can park all of our staff on hotel property. At this point, uh mayor and council members, Ron Hirsch of Hirsch Grain Transportation Consultants, will make his presentation regarding traffic. In addition, uh you should be aware that Greg Day, the hotel's uh general manager is available. And as I've mentioned, uh Brian, uh I'm sorry, Marshall Camp, our counsel will speak at the end of our presentation. Ron?
All right, uh thank you, Jeff. Uh good evening, everyone. For the record, uh I'm Ron Hirsch. I'm principal at Hirsch Grain Transportation Consulting, uh and I'm a traffic consultant for this project. Uh as you know, our firm has prepared a number of studies for the proposed project over the past six years. Including computer modeling using city-approved traffic data for summer month conditions. To identify any potential traffic-related impacts to the operations of P C H. Uh and gap studies to identify potential capacity for vehicles to cross between the hotel and the offsite parking lot. Uh all of those studies uh have showed that the proposed offsite valet parking plan would not result in any significant impacts to P C H. However, it's important to note uh that those studies were based solely on traffic volumes. Uh to estimate the number of vehicles that would need to be moved between the two sites. And additionally, uh used a now outdated assumption, uh as Richard had noted. That the hotel would only provide twenty-five onsite parking spaces. And the number of vehicles that were uh potentially transferred between the two sites. Were based on the percentages of onsite and offsite parking provided at that time. Uh further, uh those earlier studies did not account for the use of Uber, Lyft, taxis and other rideshare services. Uh by hotel guests uh on the uh on the parking demands at the hotel. Um because of those uh those issues, uh staff recommended that we conduct additional analyses. Based on the parking operations of the project. Uh and the results of those evaluations are contained in our February twenty twenty-one uh study, which is in your in your packet. Uh that study updated the original assumptions regarding onsite parking. Uh which under the current design will provide uh thirty-six onsite spaces. Uh an increase of eleven spaces from what we had analyzed previously. And also considered the can uh also uh considered the effects of uh Uber and Lyft on the hotel's parking demands. Uh, historically Uber and Lyft have accounted for about thirty percent of the hotel's guest, uh, related traffic. Uh, the study also expanded the scope of analysis from just a few hours during the peak activity periods, uh, for the hotel. Uh, which were midday period from eleven o'clock, uh, AM to one thirty PM. Uh, and on evenings from four thirty to seven thirty. Uh, to look at the parking demands throughout a full twenty-four hour period for weekdays, Saturdays and Sundays. Um, it's also important to note that the proposed off-site lot will be dedicated for long-term vehicle parking, uh, including hotel staff. Uh, so that short-duration vehicles, uh, such as, uh, non-hotel guests, uh, restaurant patrons and. Uh, hotel guests who indicate that they may want to use their vehicle during the day. Uh, can actually be accommodated onsite at the hotel. So those vehicles do not have to be transferred back and forth between the two sites, uh, when they're requested. Uh, the, uh, those additional analyses, uh, showed that even after the construction of the proposed pool. The thirty-six onsite parking spaces, uh, would essentially accommodate all of the projects. Uh, all of the hotel's peak weekday parking demands, uh, during the daytime hours. Uh, with a maximum parking deficit of only five spaces, which occurs in the evening at around nine PM. Uh, similarly, uh, on weekends, uh, a maximum of only eleven vehicles, uh, would need to be parked at the off-site lot. And that again is in the evening, uh, after about eight o'clock. Uh, and by parking those eleven vehicles or the five vehicles during weekends or weekdays. Uh, on the off-site lot would allow for adequate onsite parking at the hotel itself. Uh, to accommodate all of the vehicles that, uh, that exhibit short-term parking demands. Additionally, the identification of the parking demands at the hotel. Over the course of the twenty-four hour periods evaluated in the February twenty twenty-one study. Uh, along with the hotel valet operators, uh, experiences, uh, with the site. Uh, will allow Malibu Beach Inn to plan ahead, uh, for the high parking demand periods so that a sufficient number of vehicles can be transferred. Uh, to the off-site lot or vice versa during off-peak periods, uh, on PCH, uh, when traffic volumes are, are reduced. That's generally at, from after about eight o'clock to, uh, about seven o'clock, eight o'clock in the evening to seven o'clock in the morning. Um, so I'm, I'm gonna wrap this up quickly so that we can, uh, save some time for rebuttal, but in conclusion. Uh, our February twenty twenty-one parking demand analysis determined that most of the parking demands for the hotel can be accommodated at the site. On-site at the hotel itself, uh, during all-time periods and that. The number of vehicles that will need to be parked at the proposed off-site valet lot will be minimal. Uh, that, uh, because of that, the off-site lot, uh, will, will act primarily as an overflow lot for long-term parked vehicles. Uh, for the hotel, uh, with only a small percentage of those actually needing to be moved. Uh, uh, between the two sites at any particular time. Um, that's my presentation for now. I thank you for your time and we'd like to reserve the remainder of our time for rebuttal, uh, but I will be available for questions.
Okay, you wanna move on to public comment?
Yes, please.
Give me one second. First, we'll hear from Jonathan Kay.
Hi, um, this has been a long time on this one. Uh, when, when I originally, uh, spoke on this, uh, applicant, uh, it was about the tie-in and now I see that's been added. I don't know if I have to thank Richard or the, uh, uh, planning commission, but that, it, it looks like it's definitely tied up for a long time, so, uh, I'm good with it. As far as the parking, I just hope it turns out much better than Nobu.
Thank you.
Next we'll hear from Lester Kavias.
I, uh, you probably don't remember me, um, but anyway, okay, I'm gonna make this quick. Uh, Mr. Seymour's opening may, has made my point all along. I mean, he speaks as somebody entitled to have this pool and this off-site valet parking. They, they deserve the approval because it's taken so long to get to this point. Five hundred new pages of work. International travel consultants have determined the pool is necessary to increase the hotel guest count. And then he reiterates that the pool is a guest-only feature. And again, this is my point, you know, this is only about the Malibu Inn. Who cares what they have to do to get this pool? Okay, we all know they got the signal crosswalk. To get this pool and that certainly doesn't help us at all as a city or as, or citizens. There's no upside to us. I also wanna state that in the last three days, there were four accidents on the PCH that shut the highway down. And they did not occur near the inn, but the traffic backed up to the inn. Now, when are these gap studies gonna, gonna respond to what happens on the weekends when somebody gets in an accident, lost floors? And everything backs up, then how does it work? Um, and then when they say the scheme is, their scheme is to allow the Malibu Beach Inn to plan ahead for peak parking, you can't plan ahead on that stretch of, of, of PCH. And also with these parking studies, I spoke with Richard, uh, for a while about this the other day and we were talking about the traffic counts and. And, and, and I said, what happens when COVID is over? He goes, that's right, everything works under COVID. That's from our planning director. Now, I also talked to Richard about going back to a more global solution for this stretch of PCH. Now, I'm advocating for turning this stretch into a hospitality zone with street widening, rezoning, et cetera. Richard told me that you have it in your power to deny this approval on the grounds that you want a more comprehensive. Solution to parking for the entire area. You need to ask him about this. And you need to consider it and I suggest that's what you do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next we'll hear from Hamish Patterson.
Good evening, council.
Hamish.
Hello?
I can hear you, Hamish.
Is, uh, is a disaster. I mean, it's always red. And I get it, this seems to have been. Seems to have gone through the process a number of times. I get why they're appealing, but it seems like we're playing a game of inches. It doesn't seem to get to three hundred feet unless they cut through a hedge. And we're doing this all so they can get a pool. And I don't get where that offsets their need for a pool does any benefit for the city. And especially for the rest of the community that's gonna have to deal with the, uh, increase of traffic down there. I mean, I, I, it just seems to set a bad precedent too. Right? Like they were citing this, this other precedence with these other prod, properties and yet there isn't one that's across the PCH. So if you let this one through, doesn't it open the door for other? Properties to do the, the similar things along the Pacific Coast Highway. And, and again, I would argue that that whole zone there from. Civic Center down to the, uh. Past the McDonald's down to where the, uh. Just PC Greens used to be is, is a, is a disaster. Traffic-wise, it's always red. There, it's almost red all year long now. And so we're just adding more and more. We got Norm's Hotel coming. So I hope that the city council sees fit to deny this, this appeal and. And not set a precedent for anything like this going forward, but, uh. That's my hope. Thank you.
Thank you, Hamish.
Next is John Maza.
I assume my.
Before, before Commissioner Maza speaks, I just wanna caution you, Commissioner Maza. That if, uh, this goes back to the planning commission, this could impact your ability to hear anything sent back to you. So. I would caution you about, uh, any comments that you, um, plan on making here.
Before my time starts, I'd like to state that I will not recuse myself that the planning commission, if it comes back. This is a substantially different project than we heard. With substantially different evidence and substantially different physical features.
I, I just say if you're gonna be stating an opinion about that at this point, that could impact it if this gets remanded back to the planning commission.
Yeah, okay, can I start my time? Okay, um, this is a substantially different project. And there's several things that you need to look at. One lot, there's a lot tie between two non-contiguous, non-across-the-highway properties. That are zoned differently. One CC and one CV two. CC does not allow hotel use, does not allow. So it needs to be rezoned if you're gonna use that. It's an improper lot tie to begin with. So you must consider that. Now, the other thing that's Richard's pointed out is it's never been allowed to be across a highway parking. But we get right down to the, the main fact. And that is traffic studies and traffic. Sweetwater Mesa was not included in this traffic study. It comes right out next to the parking lot. Directly, those people make rights and lefts. Uh, and there are a lot of them. Now, the other thing is I do not believe the parking was counted correctly. The planning commission doubled the size of the restaurant. Means double the amount of servers and cooks. Okay, there is no parking for delivery trucks, which is required in commercial zone, zero. Okay, to have two valets wait on the other side of the street, well, so they can get picked up by one of their cars means minimum three valets. There's no pool service count here. So you're way under parked now. Uh, one of the general policies that you were discussing earlier is the public. Welfare, it takes precedent over the private welfare. Now, in this case. You just paid millions of dollars to have the signal synchronized along PCH. Every time a valet pushes that button, all the synchronization is off, all of it, all the way to Santa Monica. Okay, you also have what they do at McDonald's at Nobu. Anytime a guy wants to leave or come into the hotel, the valet pushes the stoplight. So you have twice or three or four times as many stops as you think you have. And so what you're going to do is create a permanent red light at that spot. That if there's any visitation to this hotel, it will be, it will back the highway up beyond belief. Um, and you must consider the ability of the citizens to travel on coast highway. And the coastal commission must consider that also when this gets appealed. So, consider what's really happening here. They want a pool. They don't have enough land for a pool. They don't have enough parking for a pool and they're stopping the highway to get a pool. And that is not the general welfare of the public. Thank you.
Next we'll hear from Jonah Breslow.
Hi, my name is Jonah Breslow. Um, and I am here on behalf of Lain, the Los Angeles Alliance for a New Economy and Unite Your Local Eleven. Uh, Lain is the, an advocacy organization focused on supporting good jobs and healthy communities and Unite Your Local Eleven is the Hospitality Workers Union. In Southern California. Uh, and I, I have three points. First of all, we object to the requirement for the workers to park off-site. Forcing them to cross the busiest highway in the city to get to work, uh, which is listed on page thirty-six, uh, is condition seventy-six Q. Second of all, uh, I just would like to ask whether the addition of a pool, which is a luxury amenity, lead to an increase in room rates and therefore require mitigations. In order to be compliant, compliant with chapter three of the Coastal Act. And third, I would like to ask how the council can make the required finding that the project conforms with the local coastal program with the. LIP section three point fourteen point five A one, given that that section states that the distance shall be measured along a legal and safe pedestrian path. From the parking space to the nearest entrance of the building or use for which the parking is required. Clearly, the entrance of the building is the hotel, not the entrance to the parking, which the staff reports admits is more than three hundred feet away. Please keep these things in mind. We urge you to, uh, reject this appeal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we'll hear from Craig Hill.
Hi, um, I have nothing against the inn and I'm gonna combine, confine my comments to the portion of the proposal that's on public property.
Commit, Commissioner, Commissioner Hill, just wanna caution you the same thing that I did for Commissioner Maza.
Thank you. I, I accept, I accept your caution. I'm not gonna trouble myself here. Um, this is one of the most complicated accident-prone areas of PCH. The applicant's traffic studies don't address the hazard and illegality of the stunt maneuver they would ask their valets to perform. They call my observations a red herring, yet don't actually refute them. They do concede that the vehicle code requires a minimum of a hundred feet of travel per lane change. But they don't acknowledge that the entire valet cowboy maneuver would require more distance than that. For the traffic moves proposed, the vehicle code states that they shall not be made until such movement can be made with reasonable safety. So let's break down the sequence of movements and the, the numbers here have citations in my memo. First, the turning radius out of the driveway. Twenty-five feet is standard in many jurisdictions. Municipal code doesn't specify that onto PCH, but does specify it in other parking lots as thirty feet. But let's call it twenty-five that takes the turn onto the highway. Then you have another twenty-five when turning into the Hertz lot. Counting those plus the two hundred-foot lane changes were already up to two hundred and fifty feet. And if anyone suggests the driveways are more than two hundred and twenty feet apart, well, the traffic study specified it as about two hundred feet. Then you add in the other necessary components of the move. Once you're in the right lane to get up to thirty miles an hour to merge into the left lane that's going forty-five, that takes a hundred sixty-six feet. Once you reach the center turn lane, you have to decelerate to zero, which takes another hundred and nine feet. Now you're at four hundred and twenty-five. And the location is complicated, so you should have a buffer for reasonable safety. You know, there, there could be a car coming at you in the middle turn lane. So really you're more at around five hundred feet if you wanna be safe. That's twice the available feet, more than twice. Meanwhile, the route they drew requires that the valet change two lanes in one move. Now, for comparison, a place we've all had to make a similar right turn quickly across two lanes, then a left turn. Is from the top of California ramp to Wilshire Boulevard along Ocean Avenue. That's three hundred and fifty feet. Here we'd be asking valets to make that move except in PCH traffic moving twice as fast with a two-way center lane instead of the turn pocket at Wilshire. And in less than two-thirds the distance. The closer you look, the more this looks like a demolition derby. Uh, the pedestrian path is actually between three hundred and sixty-five and four-ten. You can't put the valet stand near the public sidewalk because, as just mentioned. It's the use that matters. So it would be where the valet is handing it off to the, uh, guests or vice versa. Uh, like Hamish said. You might get a flood of cross PCH valet applications if you set this precedent. And Lester is spot on about the need for a more universal approach to that whole zone. And so I would encourage you to hold off. Let them consider a non-valet use of the Hertz lot, and I mentioned a few in my memo. And let's do something more comprehensive for the whole zone. Thanks.
Next is Ryan Embry.
Good evening. Um, I, unfortunately, uh, for the applicant request that you deny this appeal. Um, all of the bad reasons that came before the planning commission the first time really still exist, other than, uh, coming up with this. Uh, interesting, they, they have one compliant parking space, that one off in the corner and, uh. Of the parking plot, the rest of them would not comply. So, um, I, I, it's disingenuous to, um, look past those obvious deficiencies. But I wanted to say that, you know, Hamish is correct. I think everybody's correct. This is a high travel count section of Pacific Coast Highway and it's a high traffic hazard. Zone and it was identified, uh, as such in the PCH, uh, turn study, which the city of Malibu. Um, I think was the lead agency administering. So it's, the worst problem is turns on PCH. The top three problems, turns, speeding. So. You got, you got the problem, the worst place, an off-site use, a bad precedent. Because, you know, the Malibu Inn, the, uh, the omelet parter place, uh, opposite Malibu Pier. It's like you don't even need to go on PCH. You could just drive through the fence area from one property parcel to the other. You're not traversing some. You're not traversing some public street, and certainly not Pacific Coast Highway. So this is a revised project completely changing, um, both parcels, the number of spaces on both sides and the uses and, and I don't think that it's eligible as an appeal. I think this needs to be noticed as a revised project. I think that's reason to reject it outright, um, and not consider it further. This therefore has skirted, uh, a lot of the public analysis notice and review that a whole new project, as this is, deserves. But the city's, city's mandate is public safety. And there's far too many provisions proposed that the city would have to monitor and enforce. And they're unrealistic to enforce in practice because of this crazy hours of operation of a hotel is really a twenty-four-hour-a-day thing. And so if it was limited only to hotel staff parking across the street, that would be a concept. But that's not what's proposed here. Uh, this idea that there's gaps in PCH that, you know, so many traffic engineers have told us otherwise. And that's on my fifteen years' experience as being appointed by seven different city councils to transportation committees, you know, as chair and co-chair, so please reject the appeal.
Thank you.
Finally, we'll hear from Ann Donnie.
Oh. Hi, Ann.
Hi, um, thank you for letting me speak. Anyone who looks at PCH in this area, any resident who is not in business at this site with any common sense or sense of logic knows that parking across the street at this dangerous area is just wrong. It's inherently wrong. Malibu Township Council consistently opposes commercial po- parking of vehicles off-site and across Pacific Coast Highway at the Malibu Beach Inn site. An accident is caused, called an accident because there was a mistake. And in this case, it is wrong regardless of the numbers in the study and studies. You say there is no evidentiary support to show it would be dangerous to have across the street parking, but you know there are just times when all the evidence, all the studies are just not equal to good common sense. Not cutting of hedges or anything else. People get distracted, even the flashing lights there are distracting. You look at the lights, not the people crossing in front of you. You know, people are going to break the law, they always do, they're gonna run out there to cut across. It's against desire to stand there and wait, people are always in a hurry. There are significant impacts on PCH. I myself almost struck a pedestrian there. You don't see the pedestrian until she is right in front of your face. It only takes a second for a death to occur. And if it is a fatality or a ser- serious injury, you cannot go back in time. A death is a death. And again, MTC values safety and puts it ahead of optional business use, business expansion, or for-profit entitlement. Traffic safety and traffic flow must be superior to business issues, optional business use, as I said. If approved, the negative impacts to T- PCH would cause additional traffic turning movements, traffic signal delays, congestion, and likely vehicle crashes from the additional traffic and turning movements that would result. Please don't walk away from this, the sirens will ring in your ears when someone dies. Our first priority should be safety, please.
Thank you, Ann.
That completes public comment, and now we're back to the appellant.
Jeff and Ron, are you there?
This is Marshall Camp, I think I'm gonna.
That's right, sorry, Marshall.
No problem. I think I have, how much time do I have?
I think like, I think it was about six minutes as I remember, maybe a few more seconds, there you go.
Okay, thanks so much. Council members, uh, the Malibu Beach Inn is facing an existential threat. Every day, more of its beach disappears, and I think we know, and the statistics are in the, uh, submissions, a beachfront hotel without a beach, without a pool, cannot survive. The average stays have decreased significantly at the hotel over the last few years. The Manny Brothers are deeply committed to this community, they are deeply invested in this community. And the Malibu Beach Inn is a big part of this community, and not just because it generates more than a million dollars a year in TOT revenue, but because it is an important and iconic part of this city. The Manny Brothers, as you've heard, have spent the last six years, vast amounts of time and resources, trying to do this project the right way. They have worked to address every legitimate concern, comment, recommendation, thought that has been brought up through numerous hearings, through submissions, through public comment, from planning staff, from elected officials, from the public. The plan has been revised and revised again, every issue addressed, until the point where the staff has now recommended approval. Some of the objections being lobbed at the project this evening are true, truly unreasonable. Uh, Mr. Silverstein, you're, you're a lawyer, I appeal to your understanding of due process. The path of travel here was measured by the city, it was measured by a licensed surveyor, it was measured by a civil engineer. The path of travel is within three hundred feet as that metric is measured. You asked, Mr. Malaka, I understand in a private conversation, well, could we measure it differently? Could I come up with a route through the crosswalk, maybe tack on a couple feet here or there? That's never happened, there's no evidence of such a measurement before you. There's no evidence the city's ever used such a measurement. The project wasn't designed to meet such a measurement. That is not due process, that is not substantial evidence. You asked about a pool on the roof, the building can't accommodate it structurally. This has been raised before in these proceedings. If, even if it could, the height limits on the building mean that you'd have to eliminate an entire floor of guest rooms. It's not an option, we wish it were. The claim that the valet path violates the vehicle code, that's contained in this ten-page letter submitted on Friday to the council, not to us, to the council, we didn't see it until this afternoon. The claim about the vehicle code is wrong, it's been addressed at length. Exhibit P in your agenda packet is a lengthy response on this issue from an actual traffic professional, not an anonymous, you know, source in some office. Uh, the vehicle, the vi- there is no violation of the vehicle code, the path of travel is not dangerous or difficult. Council members, I would submit to you that a property owner deserves predictability, not assurance of an outcome, predictability. It's not Lucy and the football, they shouldn't have to show up at a meeting and try to dissuade the council from basing a decision on new theories, objections for which there is no evidence, no professional analysis. That is not an adequate basis for an administrative body to make findings, and it will lead to reversal in the courts. On the traffic issue, I just want to emphasize, a lot has been said about that. Mr. Hirsch in the submission makes very clear, as the project stands today extensively and repeatedly revised, that overflow valet lot will be almost completely unused. Look at the, uh, findings in the agenda report, in the submission, in the traffic study. The vast majority of time, most days of the week, it will be completely unused. The main property will accommodate all necessary parking. There will almost always be no cars being transferred. The High Point would have eleven cars at the valet light, the lot, the busiest time of day and, and year. And even then, you're talking at most about a handful of cars being moved at off-peak times. It is de minimis relative to the traffic on PCH. There is no evidence of a substantial traffic or safety impact. And I really want to emphasize, this is not Nobu or Soho House, I realize those are serious issues floating over all of this. Malibu Beach Inn is a boutique hotel of forty-seven rooms. Total vehicular traffic to the hotel is minimal compared to Nobu or Soho House. Many guests come by, uh, Uber, taxi, limo, and it's increasing every year. Rarely, rarely is there a need for significant car parking like, uh, and nothing like Nobu or Soho House. I, I would submit, if you deny this appeal because of concerns about those two businesses, you're hurting and perhaps killing a vital part of this community uh, that has proposed a minimal traffic impact project, has done it the right way through the pro- uh, planning process because of other businesses that are significantly exacerbating traffic and safety issues, doing it without the city's permission and in flagrant violation of city rules and regulations. That's not fair, that's not right, it's not supported by the evidence before you. You have a problem with other business, take action against them, but don't strangle this business. I urge you all to do the right thing here, the only thing supported by the evidence, and that is to grant the appeals before you. Uh, with the last fifty seconds, I would just, didn't leave much, uh, handoff to Mr. Hirsch, uh, to address any final issues.
Okay, uh, well, I've got forty-eight seconds left. Um, I just wanted to, uh, I, I wanna tack on to what, uh, Marshall had said regarding the vehicle code. Uh, in your packet, uh, is, uh, you know, Mr. Hill spends a significant amount of time uh, detailing why the proposed vehicle moves, uh, are illegal. But the bottom line is that in his November thirteenth, twenty nineteen memo, then Assistant Public Director, uh, Public Works Director Adam Chase noted that he had consulted with the LA County Sheriff's, uh, Department, uh, on that issue, who had indicated to him, uh, that the proposed pass of travel, uh, would be lawful and would conform to the vehicle code. So there is no, uh, illegal, uh, vehicle moves. And I guess I'm out of time.
You're muted, Mikey.
Yep, 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 okay, so, um, I think we are back at, um, council here, and I'm not sure if Paul or Karen had their hand up first, because I was on another. Okay, Karen?
Okay, thank you, Mikey. Um, a couple of things stuck out in my mind, um, with this item. I'm sorry, my dogs are snoring in the background right next to me, so I apologize if you hear a noise, two noises. Um, the longer you live here, the more you know, there's one constant, and that's the danger of Pacific Coast Highway. So I don't see a way around that. I understand all the arguments that have been made, I respect, uh, the applicant and their, their professional counsel. But I can't see a way to vote yes on this in good conscience. Um, I understand the revisions that were made since the last time it went to the planning commission. Um, part of this is based on quote-unquote "the honor system" with the valets using the crosswalk. That's not a good plan, in my opinion. I am, I wish there were a way to make it work, I too don't want to set this precedent uh, of having pedestrians crossing the highway, of having cars coming back, making these turns. You know, and it was said at the beginning, and, and, you know, my, my, I think, initial thought about this project. Again, with the utmost respect, the owners are sophisticated real estate investors. And they did buy a project without a pool. But this is about a lot more than the hotel having a pool. You know, and I understand what the beach looks like there, it's all rocks in front, we all know that. I just don't see how to make this work. Okay, so I want to just get that out there. The, the highway synchronization project with the signals, I don't know if that would make the difference. Maybe sometime in the future, uh, when the city has finished the triangle lot, maybe there's another way to come back at this later, uh, with off-site parking for staff or something like that, but I just have to say, this is about so much more than, than the property getting a pool, it really is about human safety. And it's about quality of life, and the highway is already bad, we all know that, especially in the summer and especially on weekends. This can only make it worse. So, um, I just want to say that, those are my comments, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Karen, uh, Paul?
I, I have some questions I'd like to ask one of the applicants, if, if that's possible at this point.
That's fine, Paul.
Okay. My first question has to do with the fact that seventy-six Q says the hotel shall require employees to park off-site. I was hoping that that, what that meant was they were going to require employees to park on what is now the Hertz lot. Part of the reason that Nobu has been such a disaster is their staff uh, doesn't park on their property and instead takes up all available street parking, which has the neighbors in an uproar. So that's my one question. The next question for them is, uh, how many, how many of the spots in the Hertz lot are designated for their employees? If they, if they are used for employees? And when is the shift change for the various employees? And then my last question is, what hours are you prepared to commit to padlocking the lock, lot entry and exit? Mr. Manny, in the planning commission hearing I watched on video, was saying he was willing to close the lot from seven PM, I'm sorry, from seven AM to seven PM. I would rather it be from ten AM to eight PM, but those are the, my thoughts, and I'd love to hear their feedback on that.
Oh, uh, council member, I can respond to a portion of this, uh, in regard to the use of the off-site parking for employees. Uh, and I, I, I think I probably would ask, um, Mr. Day to take on a little bit more of the, of the, of the, of the process, I, I, I don't see, if, if we, if we move towards a, a, a path by which we're actually using the parking lot for staff, I, yeah, I really don't see the parking lot being closed. And I, and I'll let him speak to it, but I will speak to the ability of this, of, of the hotel to use the parking lot, the off-site parking lot for staff. So the magic number is thirteen. There are approximately thirty-six staffers in total throughout the twenty-four-hour period that, uh, the hotel is, is in operation. And the way we look at this is, is on a per-shift basis. So you have thirty-six total, but the magic number really is thirteen. So for each shift that they, they have, there are about thirteen employees. Now, some of the employees don't have cars, they bu- they use buses, uh, they, they have, um, uh, you know, they, they, they go, go to their work together, uh, and there are some that can, that do in fact, um, uh, park onsite. What we are proposing is if there are thirteen parking spaces, there are twenty-eight, uh, parking spaces across the street. Of those, we believe that during the week, we are looking at probably, uh, five cars uh, over and above that, which we could park onsite, plus an additional up to a maximum of eleven during, uh, the Saturday night period. All during the period that we would be doing this would be off-peak. And the rest of those, of those spaces could be used for staff. And again, some of these, some of the, our, our staff, they don't, they don't have cars. But those that do could in fact be, uh, uh, parking in, in the off-site parking. And I think what I would also do is have Mr. Day speak on operations, because I really, that's above my pay grade.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff, uh, Mr. Mayor, for our time, the, um, I think, as Jeff mentioned, the civil math for us on this was, you know, with the number of parking spaces we have, subtracting the, uh, eleven spaces that is in the plan before you, that leaves us seventeen spaces at any given time. Um, I don't, somebody said it earlier, um, you know, during COVID, anything works, right? So at the moment, we have an empty parking lot, and all of our employees are able to park there. And anybody who goes up and down, you know, PCH will see there might be one car, two cars during the weekdays, and you might have five or six cars there parked on the weekend. And we, um, you know, we, we keep, we keep track of the, of, of our employees who, who drives, who takes the bus, we have a bus voucher system for them. Um, so we have a good idea of, of who's using those, um, uh, on a regular basis. And there's some significant carpooling that goes on, so we've never really had too large of an issue, and I can't speak to why the, um, that piece was in that, uh, uh, language, other than I think it was probably the way that the, um, the, the age of the hotel, our, our, our parking may be dealt differently, with differently than, um, than other locations, but we, I do feel like we, we have a path to, um, parking employees, uh, But we, I do feel like we, we have a path to parking employees at that lot.
And winter shift changes.
It varies every, every, every day. It's really pretty static during, during COVID. In COVID, it's really, you have seven, for the most part, it's seven A.M. to three P.M., three P.M. to eleven, and then eleven P.M. till seven A.M., with obviously the low, the slowest, lowest number of staff being on that third shift. But, but in other, in other times of the, of the seat, of the non, in a non-COVID time, we would have team members coming in at ten A.M. or eleven A.M. And, you know, it's some, some people, it works for them to work less hours on a certain day because they have school, that type of thing.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Bruce? You're muted. You're muted.
Is Paul not going to give his comments? Just ask questions, or what are we doing here?
Oh, yeah, excuse me. Where did you have comments to make, Paul, or was that it for now? And you're muted.
I'd like to hear Bruce's question before I make any more comments. Thank you. I'm still, it's quite a bit to digest. They, they said it was five hundred pages, but actually, they're numbered all the way up to five hundred and ninety-something, five hundred and seventy-something, so.
But who's counting?
Yeah, who's counting? All right, well, I'll, I'll intermix questions and comments. One question I have, this, this is on left field a little bit, but, um, the restaurant, I understand, was, was given permission to serve non-guests of the hotel. So the public can come in and use the restaurant. Is that accurate?
Yes, it is. That was part of the Planning Commission's approval.
That, that was already approved, correct?
Yes, that was approved at the last hearing.
Okay, and was additional parking required for that, or was the parking left the same?
No, the Planning Commission did not require additional parking.
And was that a proper thing to do? Because I'm wondering whether the parking that we will be approving, if we approve the additional lot, has the number of spaces that ought to be for this hotel with a restaurant that serves guests that come in from the street as opposed to just people that are staying at the hotel. So is there a number, minimum number that's different than the one that is being used here that this hotel ought to have with a general public-serving restaurant?
The, the number would be higher, yes. I want to say that if this were to be code compliant, off the top of my head, without looking at the, the previous report, I think we were about a hundred and ten spaces, I think, under the current code. And the conditional use permit, which also allowed for, you know, the Planning Commission does have some authority when it comes to parking requirements. And what they approved is part of it because of the lack of impact on surrounding neighborhoods and based on the facts in front of them and the traffic reports. The commission felt that the restaurant had been operating without causing a nuisance and maintaining all parking onsite. And that's why they approved it without requiring additional parking.
Are, are we, are we permitted in the, since we're doing this in the first instance now, this, this, this approval request, are we permitted to consider the fact that the number of spaces that exist, even with the off-site parking, if it were approved, are inadequate for a general public-serving, a hotel with a general public-serving restaurant? Trevor, can we consider that fact?
No, you know, the, the, the Plan Commission made the findings that the parking number spots was appropriate, even with a, with a public, a, a, a restaurant open to the public. I think staff might even recommend adding some spaces or requiring more. I can't remember. But they made the findings, and that decision was not appealed. So that is not before the, the commission. So you're looking at the hotel as it was approved and is operating now with, with that restaurant open to the public.
Okay, just to be clear, though, I under, I understand that that decision wasn't approved, and, and there's no going backwards on that. But my question specifically is, can we take that factor into account in connection with the current application? The fact that the parking is non-conforming to the code requirement?
Let me see if I can, if I can, if I can, if I understand your, your question correctly. So your question is not whether you can require them to have more parking because of the restaurant being open to the public, but rather considering the impact, you know, of how the restaurant, of how the hotel is operating now that it has a public restaurant, a, a restaurant open to the public, and, you know, the nature of that business. You can consider that, you know, it has a public restaurant as part of, you know, what this is, and the customers are going to be using the hotel and using the parking. I mean, that's part of, you know, what you have here. You know, you have a restaurant that's open to the public, and it has, you know, that amount of demand. But, but you couldn't say that, that they need to have more parking because it's open to the, to the public now.
Okay, does, does the record reflect whether, if the need for the additional spaces, because the restaurant is public-serving, were to exist, and, and those restaurant customers were to park in the restaurant lot? Is, is that taken into account in the study that shows how many cars would have to go to the overflow lot?
I think that would best be answered by our traffic engineer, Rob. Would you, or would you like to handle that one?
So is, was the question that how many of those using the restaurant will go over to the Hertz lot?
Well, no, I'm assuming that no one using the restaurant goes over to the Hertz lot because they're not long-term parking. But does that, is that going to increase the number of cars that are going to have to go over to the Hertz lot more than is shown in the study that we've been given?
I, I, I think it's probably, you could, should probably ask the applicant traffic engineer, but from, based on information that, that they've given us, that they have available spots onsite for the restaurant parking?
I, I would like to understand more about that because I'm confused about how if the, the, the general requirement would have been a hundred, over a hundred spaces, and there aren't, why that wouldn't mean that there'd be more people parking in the, in the non-overflow lot than are, then are used hypothetically in the analysis that we're given? My, is that, do those people understand what I'm asking? Paul, if you could put it in better words, I, I'd welcome the help.
And, and I don't know if I'm helping, but I think that the, my impression of the, of the parking study and all the rest of that is they point out repeatedly that the vast majority of the patrons in the restaurant are either residents at the hotel or guests of residents at the hotel. I, I don't know. I've, I've personally eaten there because I had clients who were staying in the hotel. But I think it's, it's, if they're promoting it as a standalone restaurant, I, I think they're doing a very poor job of advertising it.
So, so, but, so the historical parking number information that's being used for purposes of what's being done here is based on the restaurant historically, when it didn't serve members of the public, who just wanted to drive up to the hotel, go in and eat, correct?
That's from, from my understanding, yes. That's, it, it's from the historical records and data they have for people from guests and also the public coming in and visiting the restaurant.
I think the applicant is trying to raise a hand to maybe address it, if you're interested in hearing what they have to say on it.
Sure, then I'll move on to some other questions.
Okay, thanks for recognizing me. I'm sorry, I was raising my hand there on the Zoom, but it wasn't working. I, I apologize for the delay. So Councilman Silverstein, the, to answer your question, long prior, and this is a matter of record for Planning Commission and Planning Commissioners, as well as city, other prior city council members. The restaurant at this hotel has operated, I guess you would say, with, without legal conformity for many years prior to our ownership of the restaurant. In fact, when we took over the restaurant, the, we, we, we actually weren't even aware entirely that this, there was a lot of gray area, whether or not the restaurant was able to serve to the public or not. As I recall it, since I've been on the project, we inquired about that. And after a period of time, we were told, no, oh, yes, we know you've been operating to the public, but you're not meant to be. So we stopped doing that. We went through the process, got our approval through Planning Commission. But really, nothing has changed today, if you will, prior than it ever has. We've always been able to operate the restaurant open to the public, as it were. There's no difference today than there was, say, six years ago, before we owned the hotel. So the parking has always been able to be maintained on the property. And I think we've been able to demonstrate that over time, which is why the Planning Commission at that, at our last hearing a couple of years ago, gave us that, that waiver for non-conformity based on the number of spaces that were required to have for parking, for restaurant parking, excuse me.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. So now, the next question I have is the, we have a legal issue here. What does this language of the statute mean or the, the rule, regulation? The question about the distance shall be measured along a legal and safe pedestrian path from the parking space, whatever that means, to the nearest entrance of the building or use for which the parking is required. And I, I thought I heard Richard saying, and it, it looks like it says this in the court, that we have discretion to decide what the law is. And I don't get that concept of how we get to decide in our discretion what the law is. The law is what it is. So who advised the staff respecting the proper legal construction of the applicable ordinance of anybody?
Trevor, what I can say is that when this was looked at by the previous director, the basis for her determination was that it, it talks about the use that it serves. And she had believed that the use that it served was the valet operation, since no self-parking would be allowed. That, that was the thought process and how that interpretation came about. Trevor, I don't know if you'd like to add to that?
Sure, I, I think it's mischaracterized as discretion, but rather, this is statutory interpretation. This is a matter of first instance where it hasn't been, you know, dealt with in this type of situation before. So that was, you know, I think that was the point that staff was trying to make about how this distance can be measured.
Okay, Trevor, but, but if, if this were to go to court, depending on what the result is, I mean, a resident could challenge it in court, the owner could challenge it in court, depending on what the answer is. A judge isn't going to care, right, what we think the statute means? A judge is going to decide what the statute means?
That, no, the judge is going to, is going to defer. You know, we have, the judge defers to a, a city that's going to be interpreting its own code. You know, there is the expert about how that's to be applied based on, you know, the, the history and how, you know, the rest of the code works together. And so it's a matter for, for the council here to, in, you know, you have the, the same language that everybody else does right in front of you. And, you know, how that applies to this, you know, particular, you know, property is, is for the council here to apply. You know, the, apply it to there, and where is the use start? Where does the, which, the building, you know, what is a safe pedestrian path? You know, these are, you know, what you guys are analyzing and what you're, you're looking at here.
All right, so as I read this, to me, there, there's two issues in this, in this sentence. One is, what is the parking space? What does that mean? And what is entrance of the building or use for which parking is required mean? And I, oh, I want to go back. I want to start off by saying, Karen, I completely agree with everything you said. So let there be a, a footnote, a mark there, because we're, I think this may be the first time we're in complete agreement. No disagreement whatsoever. I applaud your analysis. I've got a lot more details that concern me. The, so I look at this statute, and I say, we have to measure the distance between two things, parking space and nearest entrance of building or use for which the parking is required. When I see entrance of building or use for which the parking is required, I take that to mean if there's a building, it's the building. Stop. If there's no building, and there's a use for parking that is different from a building, like a ball field, obviously, you don't measure to a building, you measure to the, to the use for which the parking is required, which is the ball field. So that's how I would interpret this statute. I don't understand, Trevor, that a judge wouldn't use the judge's own legal construction and would care what I have to think or what Paul might have to think if he thinks differently. So I, I, that's a concept that I've never been familiar with. I've never seen a judge say that in, in reading a statute and understanding what the words mean, he's going to care what a government entity thinks. I understand the application of the statute is discretionary, but not what the words mean. So I have a problem with interpreting building or use to mean in this context where there's a building that we can look at the use, because the use isn't the parking. The use is to use the hotel. It's the building, the building or the use. So that's one problem I have. And if that's correct, I understand the record is there's no way you can get under three hundred feet. Richard, that's right. There's no, no, no under three hundred feet if you start from the building, correct?
I don't believe so. That is correct.
Okay, and there's certainly no record showing three hundred feet or less using the building.
Correct.
Okay, the parking space, I would assume that means every and any parking space, not just a parking space that is being thrown into the Hertz lot that doesn't even exist for the sake of being able to say we touched the corner of the car. So I have a problem with that. At a bare minimum, I would think you've got to use the average parking space in this lot, not just any one space that is closest to the building. So that's a problem for me as well. Now, this is kind of a little Alice in Wonderland, you know, because, in fact, nobody's going to be walking. You know, it's very strange. We're looking at the safe pedestrian path when no one's going to be walking. As I understand it, the valet is going to drive over and then be driven back over. But no one's walking in any direction. So it's kind of weird, but this is the rule we have to go by. And since we have this rule to go by, I don't understand how we can possibly say it's under three hundred, it's three hundred feet or less. And I also take issue with the diagram number five, slide number five, because I, this is going to help me with the facts on this. I get that it's been measured by a civil engineer or by someone who's got an expertise that I should be relying on. But that person doesn't have expertise in determining how a person should walk. They've got expertise in deciding how to measure a path that is given to them, correct?
That's correct.
And the, the statute requires a safe pedestrian path. I think that's the.
Right, but the expert who measured this, who we're saying, who, who we're being told by the applicant we have to rely on, isn't an expert on what's a safe pedestrian path. They're an expert when given a path on how to measure that path, correct?
I would argue that that's, that's correct, because is it, this was done by just a surveyor. I don't believe it to be done by somebody who's a, a traffic engineer or anything of that nature.
Right, and, and like I said, I, I find it, it's, it's jumping through hoops to basically say a person's going to walk the line to get across the street so that they're not giving a foot or two up in this distance. And then they're going to walk on an angle on the sidewalks that they have a direct, like, like the bird flies from the corner to the gate. That seems to me to be just playing a game with the statute. And then again, as I said, the statute doesn't seem to make sense here. So then I go to the question of the, the safe driving. And, and I'm going to put aside the question of whether it's safe for other people. Let's just talk about how the valets are going to get from point A to point B. And that's slide seven. Want to put that up? While you're doing that, we were, we were told exhibit P answers the question of whether it can be done consistent with the law. I didn't, I didn't read it to that way. I, I read this report to be something slightly different than what I'm going to talk about. But if maybe Mr. Camp will tell me I'm wrong. But do we have that slide up? I don't see it on my screen. Okay, thank you. So I, I, I thought Craig's comments were well-taken. And, and by the way, I don't think the burden of finding that this can't be done is on us. I think the burden of showing that this can be done properly is on the applicant. It's not a question of whether we have substantial evidence to say you're wrong. It's whether you have given us not only substantial evidence, but a preponderance of the evidence to conclude that you're right. And then if somebody were to appeal our decision, they would have to show that we didn't have substantial evidence to support our decision. But you've got to give us a preponderance of evidence. You've got to prove to me that it's more likely than not that you're right. So here's the questions to determine whether I can say you're more likely than not right, because I don't think you are. As Craig said, first of all, I'm looking at the green line. When you come out of the lot, you don't come out straight and make this immediate ninety-degree turn. You're going to come out in some other kind of a, an angle. It's just, it's some other way of doing it. You're going to come out in some other kind of a, an angle, um, it's just, it's some other way of doing it. And I heard him say, someone could tell me if he's wrong, that there's usually an assumption it's going to take twenty to thirty feet, let's call it twenty. Is that, is that right? Nobody's going to actually start immediately at the driveway and then their car, like it's on a pivot, just turns and that's where you start counting how far they're driving. Is that accurate?
For turning into a lane, uh, uh, there is a, there is turning movements that you have, turning radiuses, i- is it, is it more or less twenty feet? I, I, I would say it would be close to twenty feet. I, I think it'd be a little bit under twenty feet to turn in that lane. Uh, I think it looks a little bit different than that, but it's, when it's indicating there. Is it twenty-five feet? I think twenty-five feet could be excessive, but. Fifteen, between fifteen and twenty.
At least fifteen, right?
Correct.
Is Craig correct about the distance from the driveway? From, you know, going straight out into the street, where the street begins at the driveway to where the street is, that the other driveway is two hundred and twenty, two hundred and thirty feet maybe?
Uh, that looks about right. Maybe two hundred and fifty, some, somewhere around there.
Okay, so now, this, as Craig said, it, the, the law says you got to be going straight in your lane for at least a hundred feet with your turn signal on before you can start your turn. We have any dispute about that?
Um, I'll, I'll ask my traffic engineers to kind of full, kind of vet that, but, but go ahead, yeah, yeah, let's assume that.
Now, Craig, Craig says in order to, wha, while you're doing that hundred feet, you've got to be accelerating to get to the speed limit. I, I take it that's correct, you can't just be moseying along on the highway going ten, fifteen miles an hour so that you can go straight for a hundred feet, right? You got to get up to speed, because there's cars behind you.
In theory, yes.
Okay, so it could take more than a hundred feet, but let's say it only takes a hundred. When you go to shift lanes, you don't ag, again, you don't just pivot into the other lane and all of a sudden you're there. You've got to go some number of feet to get into the next lane, right?
Sure.
Okay, so that's at least another fifteen or twenty?
Yeah, let's call it fifteen or twenty.
Okay, and now this diagram shows the car going directly in an angle, it's kind of like a Chevy Chase National Lampoon thing. Instead of going straight into the next lane, the car goes right on an angle into the uh, center lane. That's not going to happen, right?
I, I, I like your analysis of the Chevy Chase and the, sorry. Another situation you can have in here, it is that leaving the parking lot, they could go into the number two, uh, uh, the uh, far, the far middle lane too, they, they have that ability to do that, but um, but you're right, it'd have to go a little bit and then go in, so it, it'd be more of a step going into the lanes, not necessarily diagonal.
And then, and then the one that really was, was interesting to me was Craig says, of course you got to slow down and stop in the center lane to make your turn, you can't just, you don't just again pivot right into that lane and stop on a dime, right? So you're going thirty, forty miles an hour, you've got to come to a stop, there's some distance that it takes to come to that stop, how much is that?
It depends on how fast you're going, so let's say another uh, ten, fifteen feet.
Ten, fifteen feet to go from forty miles an hour to a stop?
Uh, um, I, I, I mean, wh- while you're going in, into that middle intersection, you're, you're, you're already slowing down already in there.
I thought you slowed down when you get into that middle intersection so that you don't interfere with the cars behind you. But, you know, I, I, I have a hard time understanding how this can possibly be done within that distance that's given in a safe manner. And I guess the question is, I, I don't, I don't see a record that shows me it does, I see a diagram that somebody created. Is this diagram something that an official um, traffic engineer created?
Um, I, I believe it, it was their traffic engineer that created it, or, or their, their staff.
Maybe they can answer if this diagram is intended to be exactly to scale and show that exactly how this would be maneuvered safely by a traffic engineer, I'd like to understand that.
Okay.
Uh, okay, um, yeah, I'm uh, for the record, again, Ron Hirsch. Uh, yes, I'm, I'm a licensed traffic engineer. This is a, uh, this is a presentation graphic, this is not a design, uh, a design drawing. Uh, this is intended to show the general path of travel, how vehicles would go from one lot uh, to the other. It's not intended as an engineering diagram, it's a presentation graphic. Uh, but to your points, uh, uh, Commissioner, uh, again, I want to, I want to go back to the uh, November thirteenth, twenty nineteen uh, memo from uh, the Assistant Public uh, Works Director, Adam Chase, who had discussions with uh, the uh, LA County Sheriff's Department about this particular uh, issue. And the Sheriff's Office uh, indicated that uh, the movement would be uh, lawful and in conformity with the applicable sections of the California Vehicle Code.
They confirmed what movement will be lawful? What's, what's depicted here in this, in this diagram?
It, it, the general movement that's depicted in this diagram, yes.
Well.
That, that going, that, 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 that leaving, i- if you want an answer, let me answer. If, if you leave the hotel, if you leave the hotel driveway and you find your way over into the two-way left turn lane, that this move and the reverse move coming back the other way are legal moves.
Uh, you're saying, you're saying that you're allowed to drive diagonally? Is that what you're saying?
All right, are you, are you trying to tell me, are, are you trying to uh, imply that this is the exact path of travel? This is not the exact path of travel. The exact path of, uh, the exact path of travel will change depending upon, you know, traffic conditions. As uh, as Robyn indicated, you can actually make a legal move from the driveway out into the two-way left turn lane. That's not prohibited.
Okay, I, I understand it's not, not prohibited, I hear you. Thank you. Um, so I'm, I'm not concerned about defeating reasonable expectations here, because as was acknowledged, and this is clearly the case, the hotel was bought without a pool and without any clear path to getting a pool. Um, I, I heard the statement that it's an existential threat because of beach erosion, but not only is that a threat that was assumed when the hotel was purchased, it's a threat that could be alleviated, I understand, by applying for a variance to put a pool on the roof, which doesn't cause any of the traffic issues, doesn't cause any of the need to create a precedent where somebody can use the PCH as part of their pathway between parking lots. Uh, and I don't want to create that precedent, that, that to me seems really dangerous, especially since the applicant here was trying to argue that because it's been allowed in the past, it has to be allowed now. Well, it has, this hasn't been allowed in the past, but if it's allowed now, then the next applicant will be able to make that argument correctly, although I do have a hard time understanding how that violates the Fourteenth Amendment. Some other time, I'd like to understand why Nobu and Soho are still in violation and nothing's been done about that other conversation. Let me see if I have any other comp notes, I think I just have maybe one or two other notes. Uh, I sort of say, I, I'm troubled when I get a staff report that argues for a grant of an application rather than in a very matter-of-fact way sets forth the facts in, the facts and the arguments in both directions. I mean, clearly the, the Planning Commission had substantial problems with this, they denied it, I think unanimously. And it's odd to me to then get a report from the staff who I think work for the Planning Commission and, and us indirectly through the city, um, which advocates a result which is contrary to what the commission that they previously advocated to rejected. I understand that changes have been made, but the um, changes don't change the fact, for example, what I talked about earlier, that the building is the source that I think you should start from, and I think the Planning Commission thought the building is the source you should start from in measuring three hundred feet. And it, it, I, this gives, this is why I think the public has concerns when they see these applications being recommended left and right, when there are serious issues to the contrary. So I, I hope that going forward, we're going to get more even-handed account, um, approaches from the staff. That's, I'm not saying you're doing anything wrong intentionally or nefariously, but it lends to resident concerns when they see reports that are advocacy pieces as opposed to what I've called, it's, it's like the difference between giving a memorandum of law to the judge by his clerk versus writing a brief. These, I think, should be more of the memo, this should give us the pros and the cons and not be advocating a position, especially if that position is contrary to what our commission has decided. So that, that troubles me. Um, but I, I don't see a way to get, I don't see a way to finding that this touches all the bases. And like I said, I, I completely agree with everything Karen said as well.
Thank you. Um, Paul?
I just, I, I'm sure there's value to fully discussing this issue before we come to a vote and to, so that there will be a complete record in the case of litigation, but I, I'm uh, I cannot see a path to three votes on this. So uh, you know, I'm content to call the question, or, or I'm, I'm sure Mikey has some comments he'd like to make, but.
Are you making a motion? Is that what you're doing?
I'm making a motion that we deny the project. I can't see a path to, to removing the, the danger. If we could, if we could have eliminated any use of the lot between ten in the morning and eight at night, I could have been persuaded to vote for it. But since we can't do that, and, and by use, I mean valets going back and forth to take cars out of there. And I, I, I've been in Malibu for too many years on, and driven through town on Sundays, and I've, I've been years, for years I've been telling my clients, I don't want to show property on Sunday, and if you're going to see it on Sunday, I want to, I want to get it done by noon, or, or uh, you know, we go where we're going to go on Sunday to get there by eleven and make sure that we're not leaving there until after four or five. So I, I can't see any way that this is actually going to work on a summer beach day, if they have to go back and forth to get to the valets, it's, it's going to be a mess, so.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. I, I think, well, before we vote, we should be a little more specific. Um, I'll, I'll just say um, quickly, because I think we know where, where the majority is at. Um, personally, I have no problem with CDP seventeen oh nine two, I have nothing against the pool, pool's great, no issue. It's seventeen dash oh nine one that, like the rest of the council I struggle with. Um, I think appeal number two has a safety hazard. The fact that the parking's improved is still not changed, that, that there is, there's clearly a hazard, and I think everybody in the council has addressed that very directly. Um, appeal three, it, this plan, as compared to before, reduces the risk, but it does worsen the parking condition. There is an intensification of traffic, not, not less. So I think that's an issue. Um, I think it was on appeal four, um, had to do with uh, and mentioned by the council, it is on the other side of the highway, and that feeds back into my items two and three, it's just, it's, I have, I can't get beyond that too, I think that worries me. A lot of time was spent on LIP three point one, four point five A one. I think it's very iffy. I think it's uh, making that finding is, was the only finding we were looking at? I don't know, but I think it's an iffy finding for sure. And I think ultimately, like I said, I have no problem with the pool. Hotel, pool, on the ocean, yeah, I like resorts like that, they're pretty cool. Um, I wish for this project, and it's not my desire or job to design it, but I wish there was a comprehensive plan that made more sense um, than crossing that highway. I think we just, we, we live with life and death on the highway every single day as city councilors. We deal with public safety as our number one priority every single day. And I think that's where we're challenged here. And it's not just what happened yesterday, it's what happened the day before, the day before, and the day before. It's unendingly dangerous. So I think the problem in here is they have a plan that you can make sense of on paper, but the reality of that part of the stretch of the highway. I, I loved who said, there was a couple of great speakers. Somebody mentioned, uh, and I, we've talked about this, and it was part of Lance's whole plan running for city council, creating that downtown stretch and I, uh, highway that's um, hospitality zone, Lester brought it up, I had not used that. Perfect plan for this area, slow the traffic down, make it more of a Main Street USA. The idea of the triangle lot with the shuttle bus, maybe that would make sense, and there's been talk of that um, as helping resolve some of the Nobu Soho issues. So I think the, I think, I think there may be paths to have the pool successfully with the parking. Um, but I don't, I don't see it here. And so that's where I'm at, I think that's enough, but I think we should specifically mention some of these things in our finding. And I'm not sure I have the language, I'm actually, to be honest, getting a little bit tired. It's been, I've been sitting here for six and a half hours. And uh, Trevor, do you want to help put this together? I see, I see you going, yes, let me help put it together, so.
Sure. The direction here is that you want um, staff to return with a, with, with um, resolutions that would uh, resolutions of denial for the, the project. And the re, you know, there's a number of reasons that you just emphasized right there, Mr. Mayor. Uh, also, you know, that doesn't meet the three hundred-foot safe pedestrian path, um, doesn't reach the building. And that uh,
Intensification of traffic, um, so.
It was a danger.
The parking condition, yes.
Or they poison the public, um, that there's a uh,
Safety hazard.
Moving across the lanes in that short period, um, to maneuver that safely. Also that it's not the least environmentally damaging alternative. That there could be a smaller cooler deck, or, you know, a rooftop pool option, or a shuttle, or other options. Uh, some of those, you know, were, were addressed, um, and that you can't approve the Jupa for the same reasons that you can't make the findings for um, section thirteen point nine of the LIP A one and A three, where it's not compliance with three point one, four point five A one and three point one, four point four. Would, would that be uh, reflect the reasoning and what you would like to be have brought back?
Uh, well, whoever made the motion in the second accept these, uh, Bruce?
I, I wouldn't limit the three hundred-foot problem to the building, it's also, it's at both ends, and it's the, and it's the path in between as well, so it's, it's the whole shebang, it's not just the building.
The safe pedestrian path does not reach the, does not reach the building and also does not reach the uh, all the parking spots, or even a, even more than one parking spot in the lot, would that be correct?
I, yes, and I, I'm not sure the record supports the legality of that one parking space that's been jiggered in there to, to make the uh, measurement work even in the um, slide.
I, I think Bruce wants the word shebang included in the resolution, apparently.
We will not include shebang. Um, but that, you're talking about the, whether that site, whether that, that parking spot is a legal spot, is that?
All I'm saying is, I, I wouldn't limit the denial to the exact things that we're saying, there may be others as well, the ones we've identified are more than enough.
Okay, do you want this brought back as a, as memorializing the decision for you to vote on that, or you want to bring it back so that you would also be able to, to continue the hearing so that you could um, review this with it?
I think just bring it back to memorialize it is what I would say. I think we've uh, we've spent a lot of time on this, we've taken it seriously, it's an, it's a, it's a project that's been in the works for a long time, and the man he's, uh, deserved to know, you know, where we are right now on this, and we, we should act on it, I think, and, and move this forward.
Do we need to vote?
Well, does, does I, does that accurately reflect the uh, the uh, direction to staff about the resolutions to bring back for the, for I believe it was uh, Count, Mayor Pro Tem Grisantis? For the, for I believe it was uh Count Mayor Protem Grisanti's motion?
Uh Paul?
I'm satisfied with the additions you made to the motion, and I think that it probably is totally appropriate.
Okay, and does it satisfy the second? Was that you, Bruce?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, um so yes, we're there. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Grisanti?
Again, the motion is to not deny, and I'm voting yes on the motion to deny.
Councilmember Silverstein?
It's a double negative. I vote yes to deny.
Councilmember Farah?
Yes.
And Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, um I'm gonna look for a motion to adjourn here. I just I just want to finish this meeting by uh encouraging everyone listening. And everybody uh that's a part of this meeting, from staff to city council. Um to treat your neighbors well, and I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
We're supposed to adjourn in the name of.
And we are adjourning in the name of uh de- deputy attorney.
So moved.
Okay, we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Protem Grisanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Farah?
Yes.
Councilmember Silverstein?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes, and I want to thank the city council tonight, including uh council hearing for all your hard work. It was a long night and um I wish everyone a good night.
Thanks, everyone.